Members, please. All visitors, please. I note that the hour has come that a quorum of this city council is present. Before proceeding, I will ask all those present to please place your cell phones to silent and/or vibrate. I will ask everyone to please take your sidebar conversations out of the city council chambers. Good morning, everyone. Morning, everyone. To give our invocation this morning, the chair recognizes Pastor James C. Kitchen, Jr. of First Corinthian Baptist Church. He is here today as guest of Councilmember Jamie Gortier. I will ask all members and guests to please rise.
Might we pray? Our gracious and heavenly Father, we come to you this morning to thank you for another day. In the words of our forefathers of antiquity, it is another day's journey, and we are glad about it. Thank you for life, health, and strength. Thank you that we awaken this morning, prepare to go out and meet the challenges of this day. As we pray today, we open this session asking for your blessings and mercies upon this council, its president, its members, and those that are gathered here today. We pray, our Father, that you would give them guidance in every decision that they would make. You told us that if we seek you first, in your kingdom and its righteousness, and all these things will be added. We pray for our country, we pray for our city, we pray for our communities across the country. Now bless this time, and may it be meaningful, fruitful, and profitable that to the end, Lord, you are glorified, and the members of this city are made better by the decisions that are made in this chamber today. Bless everyone that is here today, for we ask these things in the name of him who was, is, and will come, in the name of our Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. The chair thanks the pastor for the invocation. Council will now be at ease. Members, please take your seats. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, September 25, 2025. The chair recognizes Councilmember Deputy Whip Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, September 25, 2025, be approved.
It has been moved in property second that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, September 25 of 2025 stand approved. All those in favor will indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. The next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the chair recognizes Councilmember Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
The chair thanks the Majority Leader. The chair recognizes Minority Leader Councilmember Kendra Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. On the behalf of the minority, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
The chair thanks the Minority Leader Kendra Brooks. The chair now recognizes Majority Leader Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson for a motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council and that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to today's council session.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council, and as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters. Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, amendments to bills recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
It has been moved in property second that the legislative matters stated by Majority Leader Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson may be added to the agenda for today should those matters arise during the course of this session of council. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. The chair will dispense with the regular order of business to recognize the guests and visitors joining us in the chambers this morning. On behalf of all members of city council, I welcome you to our council session. We appreciate you taking your time today to join us as we attend to the legislative affairs of our great city. We certainly invite you to come again. I want to take a moment of personal privilege to acknowledge the Chair of the Philadelphia delegation, also former staff member of Councilman Curtis Jones, Jr., State Representative Morgan Seifus. The chair recognizes Councilmember Jim Harady.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to take a moment to recognize Megan Almond. Megan, will you stand? A proud Philadelphia native and a government major at William &amp; Mary who interned with us this summer, Megan brought great energy to the office, helping draft resolutions, assisting constituents, and supporting our legislative work with professionalism and dedication. We are grateful for her contributions and excited to see her bright future. She has a head in public service. Thank you, Megan.
The chair recognizes Majority Leader Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Council President. Today, it is my pleasure to welcome Miss Pennsylvania Junior Pre-Teen 2025, Miss Ava Washington, to Philadelphia City Council. Council President, she is born and raised in the city of Philadelphia, and Ava has represented her hometown with grace, with enthusiasm, and with much pride. Over the summer, Ava competed in the Regional National American Miss Pageant, a three-day event designed to empower young women through mentorship, confidence building, and leadership development. Ava excelled across multiple categories, and her impressive performance earned her the title of Miss Pennsylvania Junior Pre-Teen. She now holds the title with pride, using her platform to inspire others, promote community service, and embody the organization's mission to shape confident, compassionate young leaders. She is a second grader at Friends Select School, and she sets a strong example for her peers as a leader in her classroom. When she's not in school or carrying out all of her official duties, she enjoys making new friends and exploring nature. This November, next month, Ava will represent Philadelphia again on the national stage when she competes for the National American Miss Junior Pre-Teen title. Council President, as you know, Ava hails from the Second Councilmatic District, and she comes from the long line legacy of the Washington family. Her father is Brandon Washington, and her grandfather was the Ron Washington from Ron's Ribs on South Street. So let's welcome Ava and her grandfather and her father to city council.
Outstanding. Let's give a young lady another real big round of applause. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Anthony Phillips.
Thank you, Council President. Today, we are recognizing incredible youth-serving organizations in the city of Philadelphia, and also nonprofits that are doing the work to help our residents in the city of Philadelphia. I'm pleased to have in our chambers today, all the way from Delaware via Ukraine today, honoring, recognizing Atreya Lean, the CEO of Teen Sharp, for his outstanding commitment to expanding college access equity and leadership opportunities for Black, Latino, and low-income students across the city of Philadelphia and beyond. Atreya Lean is here, the CEO of Teen Sharp. I love that organization. Did a lot of work with them. Also, we have guests here from the Trust Factor Organization. The CEO Zach Fraser is here today with all of his partners and teammates. They are doing transformative work with young people with carpentry training, emotional wellness, life skills, and they are shaping brighter futures for young people across the Philadelphia area. Zach Fraser and team from Trust Factor, please stand. And lastly, we have Malik Boyd, who is the CEO of Graduate of Philadelphia, along with Board Emeritus and former Board Chair Pat Iding. Graduate of Philadelphia for 20 years, has supported adult learners transforming lives and strengthening the economic, educational fabric of the city of Philadelphia. All three of these organizations are being honored, but Graduate of Philadelphia, can you please stand and be recognized as well? Thank you, Council President, for welcoming them to Philadelphia City Council.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. I want to ask everyone in the chamber to please make sure your phone is on silent and/or vibrate. Also, I want to take a moment to acknowledge one of my mentors, Dr. Simmons, who represents the Black Farmers Co-op. Could you all please stand? Addressing the issue of food insecurity through Fresh Proddus. At this time, the chair recognizes Councilman Rulandau. We present a resolution recognizing, congratulating, and celebrating Valley Youth House on the distinguished occasion of its 20th anniversary in Philadelphia. Passionately serving young individuals to help them achieve their full potential by providing essential services like counseling, housing support, community connections, and life training skills. With Shani Meacham and those accompanying her, please join the council member at the podium. Joining Member Rulandau is Councilmember Jamie Gortier, Councilmember Kendra Brooks, Councilmember Brian O'Neill, Councilmember Dr. Nina Amaya, Councilmember Mike Driscoll, Councilmember Mark Squilla, Councilmember Jim Harady. Member Rulandau, if yours.
Good morning, everybody. I am excited and honored today to recognize Valley Youth House Philadelphia on their 20th anniversary. Since 2005, Valley Youth House's staff has passionately served young people to help them achieve their full potential by providing essential services. Thanks to their housing support, community resources, counseling, skills training, and more, they have helped hundreds of Philadelphians, thousands of Philadelphians, access better lives. Throughout my career as a housing lawyer, I have seen firsthand how the lack of housing, what it can do to an individual, a family, or to a whole community. The work that Valley Youth House does, their advocacy for preventing homelessness through advancing policy and creating systems that center youth, this is how we make creative change that sticks. This makes a lasting effect to create a better Philadelphia. Valley Youth House has transformed the landscape of direct homelessness outreach. I know I can speak for my colleagues when I say that we are grateful for the work they've done to protecting and prioritizing at-risk youth. At-risk youth. They created the Pride Program in 2020, which launched their first alternative shelter for LGBTQ+ youth, later opening up two more transitional houses and providing wraparound support services for queer youth. Valley Youth House was founded by visionary leaders Bill Mont Savage and Allison Moore, who saw the need for improvements to youth housing in Philadelphia and knew that we needed creative, intentional, and thoughtful programming in order to do so. Over the last two decades, Valley Youth House has provided a safe place for young people to turn to in times of need and positively impacted thousands of lives. They have been a partner to the city over many years, and their leadership has informed the way we think about service and making lasting change. Thank you, Valley Youth House, for your transformational programming and tireless efforts to build community connections. Congrats on 20 years, and here's to 20 more of lifesaving work. We're now going to present a resolution, which we will read to them. I will start. And it seems to be a youth-themed day today here in city council, so this is an extra special moment for us to be able to lift up one of the trailblazers and the frontrunners of taking care of our youth here in the city, along with so many of the other partners who are here today. So we are recognizing, congratulating, and celebrating Valley Youth House on their distinguished occasion of its 20th anniversary in Philadelphia, passionately serving young individuals to help them achieve their full potential by providing essential services like counseling, housing support, community connections, and life training skills.
Whereas, Valley Youth House opened its doors in Philadelphia in September of 2005 and has proudly carried out its mission for the past 20 years. Valley Youth House's mission is to be the catalyst for youth to achieve their desired future through genuine relationships that support families, ensure safe places, and build community connections, and?
Whereas, Valley Youth House's expansion to Philadelphia was spearheaded by Bill Mont Savage and Allison Moore, who launched a supportive housing program from new offices on Fifth and Chestnut, and?
Whereas, over the years, Allison, Shani Meacham, and many others would create and expand Valley Youth's Houses' programming in creative, intentional, and thoughtful ways. This included taking on a DHS contract to manage the Achieving Independence Center in 2009, which provides independent living services to youth ages 14 to 21 who were in the foster care system. This also included the creation of a youth-designated access point in 2014, which was an ingenious expansion of the street outreach and emergency services program that brought over 360 youth experiencing homelessness in the first nine months of operation, and?
Whereas, Valley Youth House has also innovated in its approach to youth outreach through the creation of the Pride Program in 2020, which launched their first alternative shelter for LGBTQ+ youth age 18 to 24, and has since opened up two more transitional houses and expanded even more wraparound support services for LGBTQ+ youth, and?
Whereas, Valley Youth House has most recently received funding from the School District of Philadelphia in 2023 to expand services to students experiencing homelessness and support individual schools' capacity to identify youth in need of services, and?
Whereas, Valley Youth focuses services of youth and young adults on three main areas, including education, employment, and housing, and serves youth through street outreach and child welfare, housing, and life skills programs, and?
Whereas, Valley Youth House now operates in 16 counties across eastern Pennsylvania. Since the organization opened its doors in Pennsylvania in 1973, it has served over 481,000 young people and their families across the Commonwealth. And in 2024, Valley Youth House served over 3,500 youth and young adults in the Philadelphia region.
Whereas, Valley Youth House does more than just provide a home for Pennsylvania's vulnerable, abused, and homeless youth. They partner with thousands of individuals each year to build a solid foundation for young people and their families, and advocate for preventing homelessness through policy, advocacy, and systems by centering youth and their lived experience. Now, therefore be it?
Resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that it hereby recognizes, congratulates, and celebrates Valley Youth House on the distinguished occasion of its 20th anniversary in Philadelphia, passionately serving young individuals to help them achieve their full potential by providing essential services like counseling, housing support, community connections, and life training skills. And be it further resolved that an engrossed copy of the resolution will be presented to Valley Youth House as evidence of the sincere sentiments of this legislative body. Thank you.
The chair recognizes Shani Meacham for remarks.
Thank you, and good morning. Today is admittedly a huge moment for Valley Youth House to be acknowledged by this esteemed council. We want to thank Councilmember Rulandau and her office for this special honor, recognizing and supporting the work and mission of Valley Youth House in Philadelphia. Over 50 years ago, a group of concerned citizens came together to try to address the growing challenge of youth experiencing homelessness in Allentown, a city not too far from Philadelphia. This community group began a shelter for youth that stands today, and Valley Youth House was born. 20 years ago, our focus on supporting the most vulnerable youth brought a small group of talented and dedicated people with Valley Youth House to Philadelphia, doing a transitional housing program for youth leaving the foster care system. Our growth from one program, serving less than 50 youth 20 years ago, to many independent living, housing, and emergency services projects, serving close to 3,500 youth in the Philadelphia region today, is not rooted in a motivation for accolades, rather the dedication to our vision, where every youth belongs to a nurturing community. And that community is right here, both in this room and in this great city. It is found in the youth who share their lived experience. It is found in the youth who share their lived experience to help us build solutions to serve others, and our brilliant staff that have always beat to the "don't count us out" pulse and grit of Philadelphia through our partnerships with the Office of Homeless Services and the Department of Human Services and the Champions for Youth Within. It has been forged through collaborations with so many amazing community organizations throughout this city. This community is found through the advocacy work with many members of this council, both past and present, including Councilmember Landau and Councilmember Thomas. We are all a community relentless in our pursuit of a world where young people are safe, thriving, and achieving their independence, in a place that knows a little something about that. A community that understands an investment in the most vulnerable of our youth is actually an investment in ourselves. The greatest achievement of the last 20 years has indeed been the opportunity to see the returns of this investment. Former youth who are now steady in careers, nurturing parents, homeowners, blooming like roses through the concrete, some of who are now members of the Valley Youth House team, helping others achieve their desired futures and holding open the door to the youth that come behind. It is the greatest reminder during uncertain times that now more than ever, our work matters and our collective mission continues. It is with great pride that I look out at the staff and partners who have shared this journey for many years and to stand here with a new generation of Valley Youth House in Philadelphia, led by Alyssa Weinfortner, Lenny Grant, and Chris Bernard, to accept this recognition and honor. Thank you again, Councilmember Landau, City Council, and our Philadelphia community.
Council of the Aries. I want to take a moment, a perfect privilege, and you will hear more from the sponsor of the resolution later on today, Councilmember Curtis Jones Jr., but we are joined by the incomparable, extraordinary, compassionate, empowering, and spiritual former state representative, the Honorable Louise Bishop Williams. Could we give her a round of applause, please? She will be receiving an outstanding tribute by Councilmember Curtis Jones Jr. from the 4th Council District later today. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Nina Ma, who will present a resolution recognizing October as Vision Awareness Month in the City of Philadelphia, honoring Overbook School for the Blind's leadership in advancing education, technology, and access for individuals who are blind or visually impaired, with Todd Reeves and Beth Ramella and those accompanying them. Please join the Councilmember at the podium. Joining Dr. Nina Ma is Deputy Whip of City Council, Councilmember Cindy Bass, Councilmember Jim Harity, Councilmember Curtis Jones Jr., the district council member, Councilmember Kendra Brooks. The floor is yours, Dr. Nina Ma.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, today we recognize October as Vision Awareness Month and honor a Philadelphia institution that has shaped opportunity for generations, the Overbook School for the Blind. Overbook's mission is simple and powerful: education, independence, and inclusion for people who are blind or visually impaired. From classrooms to community partnerships and assistive technology, Overbook equips students to learn, work, and lead with dignity. I had the pleasure of visiting Overbook School for the Blind in April and was so thoroughly impressed with what I saw and how engaged everybody was in that room that I spent some time. This resolution is more than a ceremonial moment. It's a call to make our city truly accessible on our sidewalks and transit, in our libraries and recreation centers, and in our hiring and workplaces. When we design with accessibility in mind, everyone benefits. To the Overbook community, students, families, educators, alumni, and supporters, thank you for your leadership and example. I'm proud to present this resolution and ask my colleagues for their support. And now we're going to read the resolution, and my colleagues will join me. Thank you, Council President. Recognizing October as Vision Awareness Month in the City of Philadelphia and honoring Overbook School for the Blind's leadership in advancing education, technology, and access for individuals who are blind or visually impaired.
Whereas, Overbook School for the Blind, founded in 1832, has served as a national model for excellence in education for students who are blind or visually impaired, providing instruction, skills training, and opportunities that empower independence. And whereas the school's work extends far beyond its Philadelphia campus through outreach, consultation, and professional development initiatives that enhance the capacity of educators and service providers across the Commonwealth and beyond, and... Whereas, the City of Philadelphia recognizes the importance of increasing public understanding of blindness and visual impairment, promoting accessibility, and ensuring equitable opportunities for individuals with vision loss, and...
Whereas, October is observed as Vision Awareness Month, offering a vital opportunity to highlight programs, resources, and innovations that support the blind and visually impaired community. Whereas, Overbook School for the Blind Taking Flight Campaign exemplifies this commitment by expanding access to assistive technologies, increasing professional development in the field of vision education, and investing in cutting-edge infrastructure approaches, and...
Whereas, by advancing educational opportunities, fostering inclusion, and leveraging technology to break down barriers, Overbook School for the Blind continues to lead the way towards a more accessible future. Now, therefore be it...
Resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that October be recognized as Vision Awareness Month in the City of Philadelphia and that council honors Overbook School for the Blind's enduring leadership and innovation in vision education. Further resolved that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to Overbook School for the Blind in recognition of its service and contributions to the blind and visually impaired community. And before we invite our guest to speak, I want to acknowledge Councilmember Curtis Jones, whose district this school is. So if he would say a few remarks, because he knows more about than either.
So if you've never been there, you are missing a treat. It is one of the most beautiful buildings I've ever had a chance to go into with a pool that has engravings on the ground so that people know how deep they're going in. This adaptable building, this adaptable curriculum, is more than just serving the students that go there. I'm gonna let you in on the worst-kept secret in these chambers. I've lost 50% of my sight. I used to love to read these proclamations, and now I have to rely on my colleagues to kind of help me out with that. It is an adaptable thing if you have people that help you with it. My colleagues always look out for me. I feel like the, you know, from the president on down, they put their finger where I'm supposed to sign and all that good stuff, and it's nice. But if you ever had to walk and navigate through an airport and not read the signs, if you've ever had to go grocery shopping and couldn't look at the labels, there is a greater role for the Overbook School for the Blind that we have yet to tap into. They already work with phone companies to use devices for people with diminished vision. They are a beta-testing site for those kinds of priorities. So I'm challenging you, Overbook School for the Blind, to expand beyond your borders, to take a look at our airport, to take a look at our transit system, to see how we can make it better in light of the fact that we will have in 250 so many visitors with visual impairment. So I'm thankful for you being in the district, but I want you to go beyond and go boldly where the visually impaired may be fair to go. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Mr. Reeves and Ms. Ramella for remarks.
Good morning. My name's Todd Reeves, and I am very privileged to be the Executive Director of the Overbook School for the Blind. And I want to first thank and express our gratitude to the City Council that for years has been a steadfast supporter of the school, since 1832 when we were chartered as the third school for the blind in the nation. And particularly Councilman Jones, who has always been just a phone call away. And certainly, special thank you to Councilmember Ahmad, who has shined a bright, warm spotlight on our students, and our staff, and our school with two resolutions today. We are a small but very expansive and complex organization. We start out with teachers of the visually impaired and orientation mobility specialists going out to homes of infants and toddlers newly diagnosed as visually impaired so that we can empower their parents to be the first and continuous educators for their children. And then at the age of three, we enroll students at the school. And three of those very strong students that we have are here today in representation as ambassadors of the 175 other peers. And we have here today David Hotchberg, Amy Rubens, and Mari Gilbert. And we surround them with teachers of the visually impaired, orientation mobility specialists, parent educators, therapists of all kinds, because we want to wrap around the services to them, not only in relationship to their visual impairment, but any other needs that they have, including nursing, so that we educate the whole child, and we protect and keep safe the whole child. And that's until the age of 21. But what many people don't know is we actually have a footprint beyond that. We are active in seven countries in Southeast Asia through our international program, providing assistive technology and teacher training to developing nations and non-governmental organizations serving the blind there. And as an affiliate of that, we are on the Executive Board of the International Council of the Education for People with Visual Impairment, and we are the spokesperson for that non-governmental organization that has consultative status with the UN. So we'll be on the train every once in a while to New York to deliver speeches to the UN. And that's from a small organization like us, but we think big. And the people that make things big at the school, that surround our students with passion, with incredible training and high regard are the staff, and again, just ambassadors of many staff that we have at the school that I want to introduce very quickly. We have Dr. Carolyn Bennett, who is a dual-certified audiologist-speech-language pathologist. We have in the background Addie Zipko as a parent educator. And then we also have, who else? Isabel Perkins, who is a CVI and assistive technology specialist. And we have others as well. My apologies if I have to move forward with the discussion. But we surround them with as much passion as we can. I'll introduce very quickly Dr. Beth Ramella. She'll talk about the CVI program that we have and especially the Rosenblatt Family CVI Center. We believe that's one step towards the standard that we want to establish for every single person that walks through the doors of that school, that they should feel awed by the services that surround them and that the services and the people and the passion should reflect the infinite worth we know that they deserve and reflect. Just very quickly, I want to pivot off of CVI. Don't want to steal the thunder of Dr. Ramella. I want to talk a little bit about the kind of challenge that Councilman Jones just mentioned, how we're working to rise to the challenge. We have a house that the school owns, built in 1910, beautiful stone house. Used to be used for temporary housing for student teachers and visitors. and visitors for the school. We are repurposing that house to be a short-term rental on the Airbnb platform, so our students, be a student-run business enterprise. Our students can be full participants in the gig economy. So Amy and David and Mari and all of their peers will be able to participate to the maximum of their capacity in the operation of an Airbnb. And we think... But this is where we try and rise above, which you should expect, that kind of innovation from the Overbrook School for the Blind. But where we try and rise above that is the dining room has been repurposed as a total care suite. And a total care suite, meaning a bed placed in that space with a sling and an overhead transport system so that a child who is so severely, profoundly, orthopedically challenged can be safely transported into an accessible shower and back. That kind of facility, those kinds of adaptations, do not exist on the Airbnb platform. And that child normally would be left at home when their family goes on vacation. And we think that that family should, when they come to Philadelphia to celebrate the 250th anniversary of Philadelphia being the birthplace of the American definition of liberty, that family should celebrate that in that space. We want them to be awed, to wonder somebody thought they deserved all that. We want that to reflect their infinite, their infinite worth. And what I want to say in response, when we actually do have that family come, is that the Overbrook School for the Blind is just one stitch in the cultural fabric of Philadelphia, but we are an important stitch that can bind together in the concepts of not just independence, but interdependence. And I thank you for your daily work, for redefining the concept of liberty, particularly for people with sensory disabilities. So thank you.
Chair recognizes Ms. Ramella.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Dr. Beth Ramella. On behalf of the Overbrook School for the Blind, especially for the staff and the students with me today, Todd introduced them all, we thank you for this extraordinary recognition. Overbrook is proud to call Philadelphia home. I'm new to Philadelphia, but this city is deeply values diversity, equity, inclusion, and innovation. Especially, that is important to us, the limitless potential of every child, especially children with disabilities. Each day on our campus, and our campus is beautiful, there is learning. Students traveling by wheelchair or using their white cane down a hallway to work in the OSBNB that Todd talked about, or, yes, or the Braille Technology Signage Lab where children learn to work. We are teaching our children to get jobs. We want them to work, to be citizens that are able to work. We do not take pity on our kids. The hum of technology is in classrooms where accessible devices teach kids lessons. The laughter of teachers of the visually impaired, of therapists, of paraeducators helps students build confidence and discover who they are and what they can achieve. Our academic programs challenge children to think critically and to communicate clearly, either with their voices or with their augmentative communication devices. And they learn to explore the world using strategies that we help provide them. In our therapeutic programs, occupational therapists, speech pathologists, physical therapists, and certified orientation mobility therapists, they work together with teachers of the visually impaired and paraeducators to model and strengthen skills to foster independence. Independence. We don't want our kids to learn to only rely on adults. They've got to learn how to rely on themselves. That is very important. For younger students, that might mean reaching toward a brightly colored block to crash it, or to reach toward a spoon or a cup, small inchstones. For older students, as Todd talked about, it might mean working on campus or in the community with a job coach, to cook a meal, or to use adaptive technology. But when our school day ends, that might mean working or living in a residential program on our campus. In that residential program, they build friendships. They experience a community who truly believes in their abilities, from morning routines to evening homework, laundry. They learn to do that. Recreational activities, every moment builds confidence, independence, and hope for the future. Our mission is very simple. We prepare students who are visually impaired and/or blind, many with additional disabilities, for a great big world. A world who isn't always prepared for their magic, but it is magic. Today, you see who they are. Come to our campus, see what we do. It is an awesome place. The students and staff that we have with us today, the students and staff that I work with every day, they embody the future leaders, innovators, and citizens of Philadelphia. They are living proof that great things happen here in Philadelphia. When a community believes in access, equity, and the right to learn without limits, we are deeply grateful for the city of Philadelphia, for believing in what we do and for standing for students with cortical and ocular visual impairments. Your continued partnership, advocacy, and support reaffirms something that we already know, that this is a city where students matter. Thank you for seeing their brilliance and for sharing our vision. We appreciate you.
Councilor Beatty. Members, please take your seats. Visitors, please retire outside the rails. The next order of business is communications. The Chair requests that the Sergeant-at-Arms deliver the messages from the mayor to the Chief Clerk. Would the Chief Clerk please read the messages from the mayor and any other communications in your possession?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am submitting herewith for the consideration of your honorable body the following: An ordinance authorizing the Director of the Department of Aviation on behalf of the city to transfer or convey real estate interests to resolve litigation with Tentacle Township, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, under certain terms and conditions. And a resolution approving the rebuild project statement for fiscal year 2026 pursuant to Bill Number 170206. And I am pleased to advise you that on October 8th, 2025, I signed the following bill, which was passed by council at its session on September 25th, 2025, Bill Number 250373-A. There are no further communications in my possession, Council President.
Thank you. The messages will be printed inside the journal. The next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Anthony Phillips.
Thank you, Council President. I have three privileged resolutions for introduction today. Graduate Philadelphia, Trust Factor, and to the best college-access organization in the city of Philadelphia, Teen Sharp. Yeah, you heard me say it.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the resolutions?
A privileged resolution honoring and congratulating Graduate Philadelphia for 20 years of supporting adult learners, transforming lives, and strengthening the economic and educational fabric of the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Teen Sharp for its outstanding commitment to expanding college access equity and leadership opportunities for Black, Latino, and low-income students across the city of Philadelphia and beyond.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Trust Factor Organization for its transformative work in empowering the youth of Philadelphia through carpentry training, life skills development, and emotional wellness support as part of the Children and Youth Spotlight, which celebrates the community-based organizations that are shaping brighter futures for young people across the city.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Majority Leader, Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Today I offer two resolutions, one privileged resolution on my behalf and one non-privileged resolution on your behalf, Council President.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the resolutions?
A non-privileged resolution renaming the 1900 block of South 20th Street, Dr. Beverly Wiley Way, in honor of Reverend Dr. Beverly Wiley in recognition of her steadfast commitment to her church and dedicated service to the South Philadelphia community.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council.
And a privileged resolution honoring and congratulating Greg E. Devens, President and CEO of Independent Blue Cross, for his visionary leadership and commitment to advancing equitable healthcare.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman Jamie Gartier.
Good morning, Council President. Today I have one bill and two privileged resolutions.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the bill and the resolutions?
An ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk café in the vicinity of 5015 Baltimore Avenue, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, 19143, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing Stephen Scooter Fulton Jr.'s outstanding achievements and contributions to the boxing community and his unwavering dedication to the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution designating Thursday, October 9th, 2025, as Children's Environmental Health Day in the city of Philadelphia and recognizing the importance of clean air and water, safe food and consumer products, healthy environments, and a stable climate to children's health and development.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Majority Whip, Councilman Isaiah Thomas.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Today I have six privileged resolutions, two on my behalf, Council President, and four on your behalf. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you very much, Member Thomas. Would the Chair, would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the resolutions?
A privileged resolution recognizing Friday, Saturday, Sunday, a Philadelphia culinary gem specializing in New American cuisine for being ranked 16th in North America's 50 Best Restaurants list.
The Chief Clerk please read the title. This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing Calaya, a Philadelphia culinary gem specializing in Southern Thai culture, cuisine, and hospitality for being ranked 7th on North America's 50 Best Restaurants list.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing Chef Chowatip Nakh Sutaranen of Calaya, Philadelphia, for receiving the North America's Best Female Chef Award 2025.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing Royal Sushi and Izakaya, a Philadelphia culinary gem specializing in fresh omakase for being ranked 32nd on North America's 50 Best Restaurants list.
These resolutions are getting me hungry. These resolutions will be placed on... This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Legislative Oversight to hold hearings to determine the current state of planning and readiness for the traffic flows caused by events and visitors during the historic 250th anniversary celebration of the United States and the many events coming to town.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia City Council Committee on Legislative Oversight to hold hearings considering how Philadelphia will handle over half a million extra visitors during 2026 and the feasibility of allowing short-term rental rule holidays as other cities have done around large-scale events.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. Chair recognizes Councilmember Curtis Jones, Jr.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offered two bills, two privileged resolutions, one on your behalf, and I'd like to speak to one of them.
Chair recognizes... Chief Clerk, please read the title of the bills and resolutions.
An ordinance amending Section 14-602 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Use Tables by Allowing Basic Utilities and Services Uses Without a Special Exemption in Certain Special Purpose Districts, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
An ordinance formally renaming the Winfield Branch Library located at 5325 Overbrook Avenue, Philadelphia, PA 19131, as the Reverend Louise Williams Bishop Library to honor the dedication and service of former Pennsylvania State Representative Louise Williams Bishop.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Safety to hold a hearing to examine whether death by suicide for first responders should be considered as occurring in the line of duty and to explore mental health initiatives aimed at preventing suicide and supporting the overall well-being of first responders.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring and recognizing the Eight Seconds Rodeo as a celebration of Black rodeo culture and advancing... a celebration of Black rodeo culture and advancing cultural tradition in the City of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman Curtis Jones Jr.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues, for this indulgence. Before Kathy Gilmore Richardson was known as a Winfield Girl, there was State Representative Louise Bishop, who was the embodiment of a being from a particular section of town. So when State Representative Morgan Seifus said that we should change the name of the library to recognize her, we had put, yesterday we announced and finalized about $1.5 million worth of improvement to create a courtyard effect. Where better, where better for that rose to bloom in the name of State Representative Louise Bishop? She has made so many contributions to Philadelphia Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and to Winfield in particular. I remember when she would, on Sunday mornings, you'd wake up and the music of gospel along with the smell of pancakes adorned your home. And then on Monday, she would speak truth to power about what was going on in our community and did so with the same vigor and courage she did on Sunday. I remember when she stood up against alcoholic beverages in Winfield, ten toes down, and defined, which Representative Morgan Seifus later took the mantle of, define community benefit agreements with college institutions by forming partnerships with them, one of which was a renowned Gospel Day, where she brought every church that I ever heard of in Philadelphia to have that kind of spiritual awakening on Martin Luther King's birthday. So for those reasons and many more, we have decided to honor her, to honor her for her contributions to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the City of Philadelphia. So thank you, Mr. President.
I concur to sentiments, Member Jones, and if you are lifelong Philadelphia, and you know about those Sunday mornings, listening to Gospel Highway, and Nana inside the kitchen cooking the food, and got the TV, radio, stereo, all in one. Yes, I'm truly a deserving honor for a giant here in the City of Philadelphia. Thank you for giving her flowers. Another round of applause, Joe. If you don't know your past, you will not know your future. The Chair recognizes Councilman Rue Landau.
Thank you, Council President. I have three privileged resolutions today.
Thank you very much, Member Landau. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the privileged resolutions?
A privileged resolution recognizing October 2025 as LGBTQ+ History Month in the City of Philadelphia, and honoring the movement for the LGBTQ+ rights, providing visibility for an often erased history, and raising awareness for the ongoing fight for civil rights and equality.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing National Coming Out Day on October 11th, 2025, in the City of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing October 19th, 2025, as National LGBT Center Awareness Day in the City of Philadelphia, and highlighting the vital role of LGBTQ+ community centers in serving as crucial lifelines and hubs for LGBTQ+ community, fostering a sense of belonging in community, and advocating for equal rights.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for today. The Chair recognizes Councilman Katia Lazada.
Council President, today I offer three non-privileged resolutions and three bills.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the bills and resolutions?
An ordinance amending Title 16 entitled Public Property to add a new chapter to explicitly require the Philadelphia Land Bank to submit an annual report to council that details the disposition of all land subject to the Land Bank under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
An ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning to establish Seventh District Overlay District, restrict certain commercial uses, and make other related changes, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
An ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk café in the vicinity of 1526 through 32 North American Street, Philadelphia, PA 19122, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2208 East Narwh Street, located in the Seventh Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2323 through 31 North Fifth Street, 2322, 2324, 2326, 2328, 2330, and 2332 North Orkney Street, located in the Seventh Councilmatic District, in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2407, 2409, 2411, 2413, 2415, 2439, 2441, 2443, 2445, and 2447 North Sixth Street, located in the Seventh Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council. The Chair recognizes Councilman Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer one bill and three privileged resolutions. And, Mr. President, I also ask for a leave from today. I have to attend to other business, and I would ask to be voted on my eye on all bills and resolutions.
Leave is granted. Thank you very much, Member Young. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the bill and resolutions?
An ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk café in the vicinity of 1444 Frankfurt Avenue, Philadelphia, PA 19125, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution declaring Red October in the City of Philadelphia and wishing the 2025 Philadelphia Phillies luck in their postseason playoff race.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing the week of October 5th through 11th as National Fire Prevention Week in the City of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing the Philadelphia Police Department for its success in hosting the city's inaugural Summer Night Lights program in North Philadelphia's 22nd Police District.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Kendra Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. I have three privileged resolutions to introduce today.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the privileged resolutions?
A privileged resolution recognizing October 12th as National Farmers' Day in the City of Philadelphia, and celebrating the city council's efforts to secure urban farms and community gardens for neighborhoods across the City of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution celebrating Watch Party PHL and the Philadelphia Sisters for building an inclusive and inspiring community-centered hub for women's professional sports in Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing October 11th and 12th, 2025, as Blindness Awareness Weekend in the City of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jim Hardey.
Thank you, Council President. I have one privileged resolution today.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and remembering Masa Amini on the third anniversary of her death under mysterious circumstances while in Iranian custody, and recognizing the courage of those fighting for women's rights and human freedom in Iran, the Middle East, and around the world.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one privileged resolution, one non-privileged resolution, and two bills to introduce today.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the bills and resolutions?
An ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the City of Philadelphia of an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter to provide for perpetual city ownership and operation of the city's water supply and sewage systems and facilities, prescribing the form of ballot question to be voted on, and authorizing the appropriate officers to publish notice and to make arrangements for the special election.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
An ordinance amending Chapter 19-1300 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Real Estate Taxes by providing for refunds of real estate taxes paid through rent by certain low-income persons, authorizing the Revenue Department to develop procedures, guidelines, and forms whereby eligible taxpayers can obtain state and city refunds, and requiring property owners to provide informational materials to tenants, and amending Chapter 9-800 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Landlord and Tenant by requiring landlords to complete and return rent certificates or other documentation necessary for tenants to apply for rent refund programs, prohibiting retaliation and providing for enforcement and penalties, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And a resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter, providing for perpetual city ownership and operation of the city's water supply and sewage systems and facilities, and providing for the submission of the proposed amendment to the electors of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be referred to appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Global Opportunities and the Creative, I'm sorry, a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Global Opportunities and Creative Innovative Economy to, I apologize, it is non-privileged. It's not privileged. My apologies. Authorizing the Committee on Global Opportunities and the Creative Innovative Economy to create a cost-of-living task force and to hold hearings on the cost of living in Philadelphia in order to study conditions and advance recommendations to ensure Philadelphia is a city where all residents can afford to live and thrive.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council. The Chair recognizes Councilman Mike Driscoll.
Mr. President, I offer three bills, one on your behalf, and one privileged resolution.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the bills and resolution?
An ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk café in the vicinity of 3467 Richmond Street, Philadelphia, PA 19134, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And an ordinance authorizing a streetery in the right-of-way adjacent to 3467 Richmond Street, Philadelphia, PA 19134, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the Director of the Department of Aviation on behalf of the city to transfer or convey real estate interests to resolve litigation with Tencum Township, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee. Chair, go ahead.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities to hold hearings to investigate SEPTA's Regional Rail's Silver Liner Four Fleet.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Brian O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Chair recognizes Councilman Mark Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer two bills, one on your behalf, and one privileged resolution.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the bills and resolutions?
An ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk café in the vicinity of 400 East Gerard Avenue, Philadelphia, PA 19125, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And an ordinance amending Chapter 10-700 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Refuse and Littering to require locking dumpsters, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings on the disposition policy regarding the Polish-American Cultural Center Museum located at 308 Walnut Street.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. Good job, Mark. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer five bills and two privileged resolutions.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the bills and resolutions?
An ordinance regulating the direction of movement of traffic on West Lippincott Street between 22nd Street and 23rd Street, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And an ordinance amending Section 14-500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Overlay Zoning Districts by amending Section 14-530 entitled Either District Overlay District, and making related changes, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And an ordinance authorizing various encroachments in the vicinity of 5901 Wayne Avenue, Philadelphia, PA 19144, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to acquire fee simple title or a lesser real estate interest in and to all or a portion of the properties known as 1948 Cayuga Street, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Chu Avenue, Church Lane, and East Worcester Street.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing the 125th anniversary of Corinthian Baptist Church of Germantown, a pillar of faith, service, and community.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution renaming the intersection at 21st Street and Godfrey Avenue to Reverend C.L. Pryor Way in honor of Reverend C.L. Pryor, a visionary leader, community servant, and longtime pastor of Corinthian Baptist Church of Germantown.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Nina Maath.
Thank you, Council President. Today I have one bill and two privileged resolutions, one of which is on your behalf.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the bill and resolutions?
An ordinance amending Chapter 9-1100 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Fair Practices Ordinance: Protections Against Unlawful Discrimination to explicitly protect employees from discrimination on the basis of menstruation, perimenopause, and menopause, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing October 2025 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month and promoting the importance of early detection and education in Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing October 2025 as Menopause Awareness Month in the City of Philadelphia to affirm the importance of ending the stigma and cultural silence surrounding menopause, and to acknowledge it as a natural biological process that significantly impacts the physical and emotional well-being of many individuals.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The next order of business is reports from committees. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass to report from the Committee on Rules.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Rules reports out four bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much, Member Bass. The chief clerk will please read the report.
The Committee on Rules to which were referred the following bills. Bill Number 250493: An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Roosevelt Boulevard, 9th Street, Erie Avenue, and Broad Street. Bill Number 250706: An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Grange Avenue, Park Avenue, Chu Avenue, and Broad Street. Bill Number 250719: An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Wilt Street, Gratch Street, Montgomery Avenue, and 19th Street. Bill Number 250721: An ordinance amending Section 14-500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Overlay Zoning Districts by amending Section 14-515 entitled Northeast Overlay District, and making related changes, all under certain terms and conditions. Respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation. There are no further bills to report out from the Committee on Rules, Council President.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Bass for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading this day of the bills just read into the record by the chief clerk.
It has been moved in propriety second that the rules of council be suspended to ask to permit the consideration of these bills just read by the chief clerk at today's session of council. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, the motion carries. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mark Squilla on behalf of Councilmember Young for a report from the Committee on Streets and Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Streets and Services reports out nineteen bills with a favorable recommendation.
That's nineteen for the press. Thank you. Would the chief clerk please read the report?
The Committee on Streets and Services to which were referred the following bills. Bill Number 240872: An ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk café in the vicinity of 1526 through 32 North American Street, Philadelphia, PA nature of a sidewalk cafe in the vicinity of sixty-six eighteen Castor Avenue, Philadelphia, PA one-nine-one-four-nine, under certain terms and conditions. Bill number two-five-zero-five-seven-five, an ordinance regulating the direction of movement of traffic on Gorgas Lane between Ridge Avenue and Lawton Street, under certain terms and conditions. Bill number two-five-zero-five-seven-six, an ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk cafe in the vicinity of four-two-six through twenty-eight West Gerard Avenue, Philadelphia, PA one-nine-one-two-three, under certain terms and conditions. Bill number two-five-zero-six-five-two, an ordinance authorizing a dumpster enclosure encroachment at seven-eighty-two through eighty-four South Third Street, Philadelphia, PA one-nine-one-four-seven, under certain terms and conditions. Bill number two-five-zero-six-five-three, an ordinance authorizing a streetery in the right-of-way adjacent to seven-eighty-two through eighty-four South Third Street, Philadelphia, PA one-nine-one-four-seven, under certain terms and conditions. Bill number two-five-zero-seven-one-zero, an ordinance amending Section three of an ordinance, Bill number two-three-zero-zero-three-three, approved April twelfth, twenty-twenty-three, entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the Vacating of Sloan Street from Ogden Street to its Terminus Northwardly therefrom and Reserving and Plotting upon the City Plan one-oh-six of a right-of-way for sewer and drainage purposes and public utility purposes within the lines of said Sloan Street being vacated and authorizing acceptance of the grant to the city of the said right-of-way under certain terms and conditions by extending the period for compliance with the terms and conditions stated therein. Bill number two-five-zero-seven-one-one, an ordinance regulating the direction of movement of traffic on Preston Street between Spring Garden and Havreford, all under certain terms and conditions. Bill number two-five-zero-seven-one-two, an ordinance authorizing the Streets Department to establish parking and stopping regulations on both sides of Forty-seventh Street between Chestnut Street and King Sessing Street, all under certain terms and conditions. Bill number two-five-zero-seven-one-three, an ordinance establishing a parking regulation on South Sixty-second Street between Chestnut Street and Walnut Street, King Sessing Avenue between South Fifty-second Street and South Fifty-third Street, Sansom Street between South Sixty-second Street and South Sixty-third Street, Pownton Avenue between North Forty-second Street and North Forty-third Street, Pownton Avenue between Forty-third Street and Holden Street. Bill number two-five-zero-seven-one-four, an ordinance establishing a parking regulation on Fountain Street between Ridge Avenue and Hazelwood Lane, Larson Street between Roxborough Avenue and Monastery Lane, Overlook Road between Mathias Street and Schalkopf Street, Gorgas Lane between Ridge Avenue and Lawton Street, Martin Street between Ridge Avenue and Mitchell Street, Levering Street between Crescent Street to Silverwood Street, Lamonti Street between Peckham Street and Ridge Avenue, Dupont Street between Fleming Street and Boone Street to Dead End, Monastery Avenue between Mitchell Street and Ridge Avenue, Palisades Drive between Capital View Drive and Heritage Drive and Merrick Road. Bill number two-five-zero-seven-one-five, an ordinance establishing a parking regulation on Hobart Street between Thompson Street and Master Street, Lancaster Avenue between Jefferson Street and North Fifty-fourth Street, North Fifty-ninth Street between Malvern Avenue and Woodcrest Avenue, Banbury Street between Willard Street and Allegheny Avenue. Bill number two-five-zero-seven-one-six, an ordinance amending Section two of an ordinance, Bill two-three-zero-four-three-eight, approved July fifth, twenty-twenty-three, entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the Revisions of Lines and Grades on a Portion of City Plan Numbers Two-thirty and Two-eighty-nine by placing on the City Plan two irregularly shaped areas, one located along the northeasterly side of Ridge Avenue and extending from a point northwest of the Wisahicken Creek to a point approximately four-hundred-twenty-four feet further northwardly therefrom, and the other located along the southwesterly side of said, side of Ridge Avenue extending from a point northwest of the Wisahicken Creek northwardly and southwesterly side of Main Street thereby widening said Ridge Avenue, and authorizing the opening of portions of the said widened Ridge Avenue extended through the property owned by the city under certain terms and conditions, including the dedication to the city of the additions of the beds of Ridge Avenue and Main Street being placed on the city plan by extending the period for compliance with the terms and conditions stated therein. Bill number two-five-zero-seven-two-three, an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number Three-seventy by striking from the City Plan Southampton Road from Bustleton Avenue to its Terminus southeasterly therefrom, under certain terms and conditions. Bill number two-five-zero-seven-two-four, an ordinance authorizing various encroachments in the vicinity of one-thousand through fifty-two Frankfurt Avenue, Philadelphia, PA one-nine-one-two-five, under certain terms and conditions. Bill number two-five-zero-seven-two-five, an ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk cafe in the vicinity of thirteen thirteen through seventeen South Third Street, Philadelphia, PA one-nine-one-four-seven, under certain terms and conditions. Bill number two-five-zero-seven-seven-zero, an ordinance amending Chapter twelve dash thirty-four-hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Use of an Automated Speed Enforcement System to Improve Safety by Providing for the Use, Administration, and Enforcement of Automated Speed Cameras on Designated State Routes, under certain terms and conditions. Bill number two-five-zero-seven-seven-two, an ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk cafe in the vicinity of thirty-four twenty-three Kensington Avenue, Philadelphia, PA one-nine-one-three-four, under certain terms and conditions. Respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation. Bill number two-five-zero-seven-one-eight, an ordinance amending Chapter twelve dash nine-hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Parking Regulations and Penalties to Confirm Regulations Adopted by the Department of Streets that Establish and Revise Time Limited and Other Rules Restricting Parking, Stopping, and Standing, Including the Establishment of Time-Restricted Loading Zones in the Center City Area bounded by Spring Garden Street, the Schuylkill River, Bainbridge Street, and the Delaware River, and to reauthorize the changes and additions to such parking rules in the Center City Area by the Department of Streets on an ongoing basis, all under certain terms and conditions. And Bill number two-five-zero-seven-seven-one, an ordinance authorizing thirty-four nineteen Kensington Parkers or a subsequent owner to install, own, and maintain an encroachment at thirty-four twenty-three Kensington Avenue, Philadelphia, PA one-nine-one-three-four, under certain terms and conditions. Respectfully reports it has considered and amended the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation. There are no further bills to report out from the Committee on Streets, Council President.
Good job, Chief Clerk. Clerk, that's a good one. Chair recognizes Councilman Squiller for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended.
To permit first reading?
First reading of this day of the bills just read into the record by the Chief Clerk.
It has been moved in property second that the rules of council be suspended so we had to permit the consideration of these bills just read by the Chief Clerk at today's session of council, all nineteen of those bills. All those in favor the motion was signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mike Driscoll for a report from the Committee on Licenses and Inspections.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Licenses and Inspections reports out one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. The Chief Clerk will please read the report.
The Committee on Licenses and Inspections to which was referred the following bill. Bill number two-five-zero-seven-seven-four, an ordinance amending Section nine dash thirty-nine-oh-three of the Philadelphia Code, Certificate of Rinald Suitability, Required Tenant Documents to Include the Provision of Voter Registration Information to Tenants, all under certain terms and conditions. Respectfully reports it has considered and amended the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. There are no further bills to report out from the Committee on Licenses and Inspection, Council President.
Thank you. The Chief, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Mike Driscoll for a motion.
I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading this day of the bill just read into the record by the Chief Clerk.
It has been moved in property second that the rules of council be suspended so we had to permit the consideration of this bill just read by the Chief Clerk at today's session of council. All those in favor the motion was signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries. This bill will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. Take a moment of personal privilege to recognize joining us today is the Head of Labor's District Council, three-thirty-two, Mr. Sam Staton Junior. Thank you for being in our chambers today, sir. The next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. The Chair recognizes Majority Leader, Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passage calendars.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following bills and resolutions are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. Numbers two-five-zero-eight-one-two, two-five-zero-eight-one-seven, two-five-zero-eight-one-eight, and two-five-zero-eight-two-three. The following bills and resolutions on the calendar are being held. Two-five-zero-three-zero-three.
Thank you. Before considering these bills and resolutions, we will consider public comment as follows. Your public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passage calendars for possible action at today's council session. All speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you have not already signed up for today's session, please do so now by giving your name and is hashed at the table outside the rails to my left. Once you have, once you have signed up, you will be called in an order in which your name appears on a signup sheet. Under ideal circumstances, public commenters will each, will have three minutes to speak. However, this time limit may vary from session to session. Today, the time limit will be two minutes. In order to be fair to all those wishing to speak, I tend to hold faithfully to the two-minute limit. When you begin speaking, you will see a green light on the podium. When there are thirty seconds remaining to your time, the light will turn yellow, which is your reminder to conclude your remarks. Once two minutes have passed, the light will turn red, and the Sergeant-at-Arms by the name of Sergeant-at-Arms Lopez will disconnect your microphone. At that point, please yield the podium to the next speaker if you have not already done so. I also reserve the right pursuant to our rules of council to limit repetitious comments on the same subject matter. I will ask the Chief Clerk to please read the name of our first speaker.
Representative Morgan Seifus, Jasper Liam, Patrick Eiding, Atnry Aline, Zachary Frazier, Kate Perez, Jeremy Blattstein, and Diana Coleman. We have Jasper Liam, Patrick Eiding, Atnry Aline, Zachary Frazier, Kate Perez, Jeremy Blattstein, and Diana Coleman.
Checking, one, two, check, perfect. Sorry about it, Councilwoman.
The floor is yours, Madam Chair.
Got a little lost. Good morning, Council President and members of City Council. I am State Representative Morgan Seifus, proud to represent the one-hundred-ninety-second Legislative District and to serve as the Chair of the Philadelphia House Delegation. I stand today in strong support of Councilman Curtis Jones Junior's proposal to rename the Winfield Library in honor of the Honorable Reverend Louise Williams Bishop. Rep Bishop is a giant in West Philadelphia history, in Philadelphia history, and in Pennsylvania history. Her life has been defined by breaking barriers, not only breaking barriers, but building bridges. As the gospel queen of radio, her voice has been a source of hope and inspiration for more than seventy years. My grandmother would always sit with me as we listened to that radio show every Sunday morning. And as the first, the first Black woman elected to represent the one-hundred-ninety-second District in Harrisburg, she carried that same spirit into public service, fighting for civil rights, championing education, and giving a voice to those who often went unheard, especially as the minority chair of the Children and Youth Committee for the House of Representatives. I am honored to follow in her footsteps as she paved the way for me and for those who will come after me. Reverend Williams Bishop was a, was more than a lawmaker. She's a trailblazer, a champion for justice, and a beacon of hope for communities across Philadelphia. For nearly three decades, she served in the Pennsylvania House of Representatives with unmatched grace, determination, and moral clarity. Her voice, both in the legislature and through her ministry, uplifted countless families, particularly those who often felt unseen or heard. Renaming the library is not only a recognition of Reverend Bishop's achievements, it is an affirmation of the values that she stood for. Libraries where, are where history lives, where knowledge and opportunity are passed through one generation to the next. By lifting her name here, we ensure that her story and her impact are preserved as part of our history, particularly at a time when this nation tries to erase, rewrite, and ban our legacy. This tribute not only honors her extraordinary work, but also reminds our young people that leadership rooted in faith, community, and perseverance can change lives. The Winfield Library, carrying her name, will inspire future generations to lead with courage, conviction, and compassion. So on behalf of my colleagues in Harrisburg, well unfortunately, we don't get an opportunity to pass too many of these opportunities because of a divided legislature. I want to thank this chamber, I want to thank the City Council for letting us enshrine the Honorable Louise Bishop, Williams Bishop's living legacy in Winfield and in Philadelphia history for decades to come. Thank you so much.
Chair calling them speaker.
Jasper Liam, Patrick Eiding, Atnry Aline, Zachary Frazier, Kate Perez, Jeremy Blattstein, and Diana Coleman.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Jasper Liam. I'm the Executive Director at the Attic Youth Center, and I'm a proud transgender person and a lifelong Philadelphian. For over thirty years, the Attic has been a home to and haven for LGBTQ youth, particularly those in Philadelphia, and a place that young people can show up exactly as they are. Was I read on purpose? And often for the first time, in those thirty years, I've gotten to witness how the experience of coming out has evolved from whispered conversations in fear to joyful declarations of authenticity. And yet, the truth remains, even in the most supportive families and communities, coming out is an incredibly difficult process. I know all of my allies in the room will understand when there's moments, when you see something, you hear something, and that moment you pause, and you say, should I say something? That is a coming out moment. It's difficult when lifesaving health care is under attack for transgender youth. It's difficult when anti-LGBTQ rhetoric seeks to erase our very existence and our history. It is difficult when young people are forced to choose between the relationships they have with parents and caregivers and the pain of staying in the closet, or risk losing those most precious relationships by living their full and true selves. That's why this resolution matters so much, because visibility matters. And today I ask, for more than a celebration of our history and our coming out, I call on every member of this council and on every ally in our city to not just stand with us, not just stand with us, but also to fight with us. We cannot do this alone. Because coming out is not only about sexuality and gender, every one of us has had our own kind of coming out. It's a vulnerable moment of truth-telling. It's a risk. It's telling your child that a loved one or a pet has passed away. It's telling that your mother that, that the cancer is back. It's saying, I need help. It's saying that you need to go to rehab. It is all of those conversations. They are all coming out. And it's asking your school or your employer to change your name and gender marker and asking for help with that, hoping that you will be safe. Coming out in all of its forms, it's an act of courage, and it deserves an act of solidarity in return. So thank you, Councilmember Ruud Landau, and for your leadership, and I look forward to seeing the city support our LGBTQ communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Councilwoman Johnson, President Johnson, and also Councilwoman Bass, and the members of council. My name is Pat Eiding, and I'm here to testify in support of a resolution supporting Graduate Philadelphia. This year marks the twentieth anniversary of Graduate Philadelphia. When Graduate was first established, a very, very few could have imagined the impact it has on so many of our adult learners and their families throughout the city. Since two thousand and five, Graduate Philadelphia has been an integral part of the workforce development system in Philadelphia. As one of the only organizations focused on adult learners, it fills a unique role in the city. Graduate Philadelphia works at the intersection of post-secondary education, workforce development, and community empowerment to address the immediate and long-term needs of families and households. Graduate Philadelphia has grown since its inception and now serves over a thousand adult learners each year with career counseling to pursue a workforce certification or secondary degree. Graduate Philadelphia has recently created some innovative partnerships, including the North, North Ten Philadelphia Impact Center, bringing services directly into the community, a model that Graduate Philadelphia hopes to replicate across the city. In addition, Graduate Philadelphia is part of School District of Philadelphia's New Parent University, bringing their services directly to parents of the school students. Since two thousand and five, Graduate Philadelphia has helped more than eighteen thousand adults earn more than ten thousand college credentials, increasing their earning potential and advancing their careers. Through, through the work of Graduate Philadelphia, thousands of families have been able to realize economic stability and built generational wealth. Graduate Philadelphia was the first program in the nation to align resources both outside and inside of higher education, specifically for adult learners to enroll in college, obtain in industry-recognized credentials, and achieve family-sustaining wages. Graduate Philadelphia created career-integrated learning and rising to expand the pathways to learning by addressing the unique challenges associated with underserved communities such as basic needs, childcare, financial literacy, digital literacy, and access to wraparound services. As past Chair of the Board of Graduate Philadelphia, I can attest to the dedication and hard work of Malik Brown and his team. None of the success of Graduate Philadelphia would be possible without their commitment to this incredibly important work. Thank you for your time and consideration, and thank you to Councilman Anthony Phillips for introducing his resolution.
Good afternoon. Atenry Aline, I'm the co-founder and CEO of Teen Sharp. Sorry, my voice is gone today, so I'm Miss Debbie. Our parent program, senior manager might step in for me. Thank you, Councilman Dr. Anthony Phillips, for acknowledging our work. I'm gonna let you go.
Thank you, Councilman Dr. Anthony Phillips, for acknowledging our work today. I'm Atenry, the co-founder and CEO of Teen Sharp. At Teen Sharp, our mission is to prepare Black, Latino, and low-income students to attend and thrive at America's top colleges and to graduate with minimum or no debt. My wife and I created Teen Sharp back in 2009, when we were graduate students as a ministry at our church and started with only ten students. I would be remiss if I did not take this opportunity to acknowledge my pastor, Lincoln Corbin Sr., who died earlier this year. He was born and raised in Philadelphia, attended only high school, and he helped erect the Liberty Two Building in Philadelphia during his time as a union construction worker. He also built the very foundation that our work stands on at Teen Sharp. We never imagined that sixteen years later, we would still be growing our impact, which now includes around five hundred alumni. That includes my niece Maya, who was the original inspiration for starting Teen Sharp, who lives in Philadelphia and is thriving professionally and as a community leader. We look forward to growing our impact in Philadelphia, partnering with so many leaders in this room, and building the next generation of changemakers in this great city. Thank you so much.
How you doing? My name is Zachary Frazier, Trust Factor Organization Executive Director. First and foremost, I'd like to thank everyone for having us, and just thanking council for accepting, you know, what we do as an organization. We're very small grassroots, but we try to make an impact in our, in our community where we are, which is the northwest section of Philadelphia. Thank you so much, Anthony Phillips, for acknowledging what we do, coming and being a part of our program, checking us out, seeing what we have, talking directly to our students and getting them to understand more about me. He went to a place where I was, I was happy to know that when he came, he spoke to me very briefly, but he wouldn't talk to our students, and he let them talk about me, to where there was a question of, who is Mr. Frazier to you, and what does he do, and how does he make you feel? And at that point, I'm guessing that's when he made the decision to say, you know what? I want to see if I can do something for the organization, because he got the answers from them. I was, of course, going to tell him how great I was as a person, right? That's just what I was supposed to do. But what I realized was that those kids loved me and I loved them, and we were doing the right things, and I appreciate it. But I want to also give a special thanks to my partner, Ms. Jessica Hill. Thank you so much, Jessica, for standing behind me. I'm fighting a good fight every day, because I know it's hard, especially when you don't have any money, and we're just doing this from a place of passion. Passion is very hard to deal with when you have not too many resources, right? But you keep fighting because the passion over succeeds everything. And when you see the kids' faces, and some of them just look at you, and they're like, listen, I want to come back here tomorrow, and you're like, look, today's the last day, and they're like, but what about tomorrow? That's when you start thinking about, you know, what could we do next to make this thing realistic, and whereas though it could continue to change lives? Thank you, you know, Council President, he was, you know, instrumental in some of the things, but, and I also want to give one special thanks to someone else, Ms. Cindy Bass. You made that, that last cohort this summer come to be reality, and we appreciated that. That what you gave us made us actually be able to put something down that was impactful, that, Mr. Phillips, you were able to see because, you know, that council member, Ms. Cindy Bass, she made, she put something out for us, and I appreciate you for that. Thank you so much. The resolution represents more than a moment of recognition. It is a reminder of what happens when our city stands behind programs that empower youth to learn, grow, and lead. Through a building and program, we teach skills that build confidence, purpose, and community pride. We understand the importance of collaboration, and we are deeply grateful for community partners such as, you know, Guiding Stars, and Executive Director over there, Ms. Kimberly Reese, who partnership strengthens our ability to serve, to serve these young men. We are excited and honored to continue to work as we build, build out our pre-apprenticeship program, and I would like to say, we officially, from the state of Pennsylvania, we are now a pre-apprenticeship program. We are acknowledged. We can get them from our program right to work. And that's what we wanted, that's what we want to make a complete program, so we appreciate that. And with that being said, you know, we creating pathways that don't just inspire our young men, but prepare them for real careers, okay? Real careers and economic opportunity right here in our city of Philadelphia. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great work. Great work.
Kate Perez, speaking on the land bank sales. Unable to see the difference in Philadelphia's children and the children abroad robbed of schooling, housing, family, and dignified life with our tax dollars, the land bank attempts to turn vacant properties into opportunities for our neighbors, most popularly community gardens that benefit the children, ideally making it more accessible for our disabled neighbors, something that Palestinians are prepared to do now as a ceasefire is on the table for the occupation to possibly sign today. With our weapons, Palestine now holds the title for most amputated children in the world, most new orphans, and most child-led households. They're going to need to build an accessible world free from occupation and American intervention. What is a ceasefire worth if we allow ships to leave our docks holding ammo, knowing that they will most likely be aimed at civilians, likely during this alleged ceasefire, as the occupation has famously broken every single ceasefire agreement they have ever made? Beyond the constant marches in our streets and weekly vigils for the martyrs, groups in Philadelphia are going on hunger strikes, calling for the end of the illegal blockade that has forced famine on an entire population since March, something Israel still maintains and went so far as to illegally detain more than five hundred flotilla volunteers who tried to break this illegal blockade this past week, stealing more than hundreds of thousands of dollars' worth of aid, dumping baby formula into the bottom of the ocean, and defying the ICJ's binding orders for unimpeded humanitarian access. On average, our sister city has killed an average of one classroom of children per day, every day, since this phase of genocide in 2023, forcing schools to shut down as they didn't have enough children left alive to teach. As Philadelphia continues to maintain our relationship, we should consider how this reflects on us, what we are willing to accept as decent and moral, and where we may one day be headed as we continue to pour funds into stronger carceral systems and allow the PPD to cross-train with these soldiers. We need an arms embargo now, and we will see a free Palestine.
Thank you.
We have Jeremy Blattstein, Diana Coleman, May Virginia Lynn Hoggman, Deborah Robach, Colin Brady, Alex Lee Guevel, Ben Miller, and Carol Simmons also make their way to the podium.
Hello. My name is Jeremy Blattstein. It was never about a ceasefire, so let's, like, stop playing games, right? Enough is enough of these speeches that I get up here and listen to, but we're talking about the land banks, since the land bank's equated to Palestine today, I guess. But City Councilman Jay Young moves lots from the land bank, right? And the land bank's meeting on Tuesday, and members of the City Council refuse to move land from the land bank. It's a, it's a shame, and that, again, the backs are turned because there could be thirty affordable homes that are going to be built, but on Tuesday at the meeting, they're not going to get passed, right? Because there's members of this board that are on the board of the land bank from the city council, and they're voting against affordable housing in the seventh district. I'm glad that Councilwoman Lazada today put up that bill about the land bank and that report, because guess what? The land bank already produces that report, so let's do it again. That report's already there. Enough is enough, right, when it comes to playing games with the land bank. Hopefully, there's changes. Everyone wants to talk about, let's make sure that we stay in power, right? But if we don't grow Philly Two-Two Millie in 2030, they're going to do a redistricting of the House of Representatives, and guess what happens? Where they've built housing in the country gets more representation. So that's why growing Philly Two-Two Millie is so important, and I really do encourage each and every one of you to approve, turn the key homes, and trying to cut the red tape to figure out how we can build more housing in Philadelphia. And the last thing I'll say is, we're talking about Septa, because it's unusable right now, completely unusable, right? Because of the silver liners. So if you know anybody that's using regional, right now, they can't, and it's unfortunate. So we really do need to encourage the House of Representatives to properly fund Septa, and thank you, grow Philly Two-Two Millie.
Hello, my name is Lynn Hoggman, and I'm a resident of the 4700 block of Windsor Avenue, a street adjoining 47th Street in West Philadelphia. I'm speaking in opposition to Bill 250712, which unless amended, amended, would give the Streets Department the power to remove and restrict parking on 47th Street without any community input. Much of 47th Street is residential. While there are specific parking changes on 47th Street that were disclosed to the community as part of the conversion of 47th Street to a one-way, one-lane street, this bill would not merely authorize the disclosed changes, but would instead give Otis and the Streets Department carte blanche to remove and restrict parking in residential parts of 47th Street without any community input on the impact, need for, or usefulness of the changes. Community input is essential for the types of changes that this bill would allow, such as loading zones. Whether a loading zone would be beneficial on a residential block cannot be determined without input from the people who live there on how it would be used, whether the residents want it, and the times of day that the restriction should be in effect so as to minimize the loss of overnight parking. There is also not a need, at least south of Baltimore Avenue, for loading zones to prevent stopping in the bike lane, as there is an empty lane between the bike lane and parking. Bill 250712, moreover, does not limit the amount of parking that could be removed or restricted without community input. It therefore affects not only residents on 47th Street, but also all residents on adjoining and nearby blocks, as removal of substantial parking on any block causes residents who needed to park there to park on those other streets. 47th Street and our neighborhood in West Philadelphia are not Chestnut and Market Streets in Center City. Imposing parking and stopping restrictions in front of residents' houses without community input, whether in our neighborhood or on residential blocks in any part of the city, is very different from regulating parking in commercial areas that have no houses that depend on, on street parking. Addressing the changes on 47th Street and other residential areas by bills authorizing specific parking changes that have been disclosed would be a far better solution. I strongly urge you to amend Bill 250712 to require the Streets Department to give notice and an opportunity to be heard to the affected blocks and residents before they can restrict parking. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Deborah Robach, the Menopause Whisperer. I'm the founder of Going Through the Change, an organization that is dedicated to women's health and wellness across the lifespan. I also really want to thank Councilwoman Ahmad and this council for introducing the importance of Menopause Awareness Month. This recognition is more than symbolic. It opens the door for greater understanding, education, and compassion for the many women in our city navigating the physical, the emotional, and the social transition of menopause. Menopause is not a disease. Let me say it again. Menopause is not a disease. It is a natural process of life, a passage that we all deserve to be made aware of and supported and respected. The women are teachers, nurses, mothers, grandmothers, caregivers, leaders across Philadelphia, deserves workplace and communities that acknowledges their experience and provide resources to help them go through this transition. Today, as we affirm Menopause Awareness Month, we also affirm our collective commitment to end the silence, no more silence, okay? Challenge stigma and ensure equity across all, everybody that are women. Thank you for recognizing this vital issue and for joining us in building the city where women are understood, valued, and supported through every stage of life. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Colin Brady, Alex Lee Guevel, Ben Miller, Carol Simmons, May Stephanie Drain, Paul Birdsong, Viola Pryor, and Elizabeth Waring also make their way to the podium.
Thank you, council members. My name is Colin Brady, and I'm introducing a nonprofit called Fighting Chance USA, which offers non-contact boxing and therapy to youth aged eight to twenty-five. I grew up in Fort Washington, PA, and graduated from Penn State. I've been in the logistics industry here in Philly for seventeen years, including thirteen in outside sales. I've battled depression since age thirteen, and as a thirty-year-old member at the sporting club at the Bellevue, I got tired of waiting around to play basketball one day, so I tried the boxers workout in the room next door, and it was the best workout of my life. I started training regularly, and the boxers workout quickly became my favorite antidepressant. I began reading about nutrition and wellness and became a certified health coach at the Institute for Integrative Nutrition. In 2022, at age thirty-seven, I became the oldest Pennsylvania Golden Gloves champion in history. I serve on the Board of Directors at the Veteran Boxers Association in Port Richmond, as well as USA Boxing in Colorado Springs, and I'm a passionate advocate for amateur boxing as a safe and healthy outlet for men, women, and children of all ages, and especially those battling depression, anxiety, alcoholism, addiction, PTSD, obesity, and ADHD, among other mental disorders. Last year, I connected with Matchroom Boxing after they signed Philly's own world champ, Jaron Ennis, and through Matchroom, I connected with Empire Fighting Chance, an England-based charity offering non-contact boxing and psychologically-informed therapy to youth aged eight to twenty-five. Empire is doing amazing work in England and now Edmonton, Canada, improving mental health and reducing crime, and we're working on bringing Fighting Chance USA to the greatest boxing city in the world, Philadelphia. Alex is here with Matchroom, and I will let him talk about the impact that Empire has made in the UK and now Canada. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, council. Thank you very much for having me today. My name is Alex Guevel. I'm the Head of Community Development at Matchroom Boxing. We are the world's leading. My name is Alex Guevel. I'm the Head of Community Development at Matchroom Boxing, with the world's leading and only truly global boxing promoter. Prior to working at Matchroom, I used to work for England Boxing, the equivalent of USA Boxing here in the United States. At Matchroom, we have a commitment to give back to grassroots boxing, utilizing resources, role models, and our platform to give back to grassroots boxing and promote the many benefits of boxing in communities across the world. In the UK, we've partnered with Empire Fighting Chance to expand capacity, the capacity of our work, and also the impact. I've worked on this program in all capacities as a participant, a referring agent, a partner, and an advocate. Non-contact boxing programs, Empire utilizes non-contact boxing to deliver psychologically-informed mentoring, therapeutic support programs. They also have a club mentoring network, which teaches clubs how to become more self-sufficient, sustainable, using the Empire Fighting Chance blueprint to make clubs more sustainable and therefore for the long term. We now want to bring this program to the US, and what better place to start than the greatest boxing city in the world, Philadelphia? To illustrate the scale of this work, I've compiled some headline statistics of the work we've achieved in the UK. In total, we've worked with, Empire Fighting Chance have worked with a hundred and thirty partners to date, a hundred and twenty-two in the UK, and eight in Canada. In terms of those partners, forty-nine of those boxing clubs based in the UK. We've worked with directly around three thousand two hundred young people a year, and our partners have worked with since March 2022. with, since March 2022, have worked with 17,500 young people. In terms of funding, our partners have bought in, since March 2022, have bought in 4.5 million pounds. As a call to action, we are obviously hosting, if you'd like to find out more about this program, we're hosting a private mixer, working with Robert Murray Jr. at Comcast Spectacle in the director's lounge at Xfinity Mobile Arena on Saturday night at the Boots Ennis versus Wisma Lima fight. We'd love to see you there and tell you more about the program. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have Ben Miller, Carol Simmons, Steph Drain, Paul Birdsong, Viola Pryor, and Elizabeth Waring.
Good morning. My name is Ben Miller. I'm speaking in support of Councilmember Kendra Brooks' resolution to acknowledge National Farmers' Day. I'm a professional chef in Philadelphia. For the last 20 years, I was co-founder of South Philly Barbecue, People's Kitchen Philly, Masa Cooperativa, and Reinhardt Street Community Farm. I've been a resident on the 6,100 block of Reinhardt Street since 2006. In 2021, we decided to start growing free produce for the neighborhood. But before we could start, we removed seven truckloads of trash from the block. We surveyed the neighbors and asked them what they wanted us to grow. We brought in truckloads of wood chips and compost from Fairmount Park Recycling Center. We planted watermelons, tomatoes, okra, collars, sweet potatoes, herbs, sunflowers, fruit trees. The elders on the block stopped by to show us love and share their wisdom. The curious children helped us plant seedlings, water, and harvesting. We hosted cookouts, educational workshops, block cleanups. We painted fences, built bamboo trellises, and built community. Over the last five years, this community has strengthened and deepened. A group of displaced refugee farmers from Burma joined our efforts, growing some of their indigenous crops that were not available in any stores. These gardens have brought joy, health, and life to the land that was formerly abandoned and forgotten. But our land is insecure. We work in a state of uncertainty and impermanence, but nonetheless, we work joyfully. I thank Councilmember Kendra Brooks and City Council for approving the purchase of liens of almost 100 community garden parcels in 2023. Seven of those lots now are underway to the land bank, are parcels that are stewarded by the Reinhardt Street Farm Team. Gardens and green space are so crucial to the health, well-being, and safety of our community. We thank the council for acknowledgement of the importance of farmers in this resolution. We love doing our work, but we need the support of our elected officials to ensure our long-term stability and success. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, City Council, for this opportunity to speak. A very special note of appreciation to Councilwoman Kendra Brooks for her resolution for a National Farmers' Day here in Philadelphia. And now I ask everyone that can hear my voice, what are you doing to address food insecurity? Do you have a plan? How are you preparing? My name is Dr. Carol Simmons. I'm the executive director of the Black Farmers Cooperative. And we, the BFC team, have the answers, along with our president Pastor Darian Thomas of Eastwick. But let me make a few points. We're headed to either a declared emergency or disaster. I'm not stoking fear, but I want us to anticipate and recognize a crisis when we see it and when we feel it. Understandably, federal loans and grants to farmers have been cut. Such action has not, has had an adverse impact on crops, the farming industry, and has threatened our food source. But ah, BFC, we have some answers for you. The city has 4,000 vacant lots. That's 4,000 vacant lots that could be used to sow and reap and harvest at minimal cost for the respective neighborhoods where these properties reside. Adopt a block, build, grow a lot. Adopt a block, grow a lot. Lastly, a resolution is just not a slogan proclaiming a month or a day. A resolution is a solution. So let's plan and prepare to cultivate National Farmers' Day. And like I said, adopt a block, grow a block. We can grow in Philadelphia. It is a process. Thank you.
Hey, peace, y'all. My name is Steph Drain. I'd like to start by appreciating City Council for your efforts in helping support farmers across the city as we protect and steward the land. I'd like to give special thanks to Councilmember Brooks for introducing this resolution and being an outstanding advocate for growers across Philadelphia. Our work wouldn't be possible without you. Again, my name is Steph Drain. I'm a lifelong South Philly resident from Reinhardt Street and the former farm director for Reinhardt Street Community Garden. When I grew up, these lots were abandoned, full of debris from cereal dumpsters and sights of despair. When I was young, me and my friends would run around and play in them, but we yearned for real green space. My family kept a little garden next to our home, but it was a small green speck against the backdrop of the gray and blighted lights. In 2016, I moved away from my childhood home, but would visit my parents often, and when I did, I was unsurprised that nothing had changed. That was until I met the Reinhardt Street crew in 2021, who had started remediating the land, and I engaged with them immediately and then became the farm director. Over the last few years, we've gone from a few blocks to full blossoming food oases that our community gathers around. Our farm is transforming abandoned lots on Reinhardt Street into a thriving food oasis and community gathering space rooted in climate justice and land sovereignty. This project is built on three pillars of power building: food access, land reclamation, and community care. First, we're growing healthy, local food while restoring polluted soil, a step towards healing environmental harms caused by systemic neglect. Second, we're preventing displacement by organizing against gentrification, speculative development, and recombinating the community control over the land. Third, we're developing a community kitchen and fridge to address food apartheid and ensure neighbors can share nutritious meals freely. We believe land is a communal right and are reclaiming it for collective resilience. We appreciate all of the support from City Council, but our work isn't done. We have to ensure that the land communities are stewarding stays under community control and that farmers and farms are able to thrive. We are essential in our community's ability to control its own means of food production. Lastly, as a longtime constituent, I'd like to echo appreciation for Council President Johnson and warmly invite you to our second annual Harvest Festival on the 18th. It's going to be more lit than the block party you just threw on King Sassen, respectfully.
We have Paul Birdsong, Viola Pryor, Elizabeth Waring. May Lynn Landis, Tyrell Brown, Grace Lewis, and Obona Haggins also make their way to the podium.
My name is Paul Birdsong. I'm from the Black Panther Party for Self-Defense. I wanted to speak on something that I just saw before I speak on what I came to speak on. And Kenyatta, you weren't in the room when it happened, but you should know about it. The sister, Ms. Perez, came up here and spoke her mind. And then the guy that always speaks about SEPTA came up here in front of everybody and mocked at what she said, and that's bullying, and it shouldn't be allowed in a place like this. So I just wanted to put that out there and I wanted to say, you know, you ain't got to come up here and bully the ladies. You could pick on somebody your own size. The Black Panther Party is around for that. I got time for it. So I just wanted to put that out there. Now, what I came to speak about, I heard y'all renaming the 6,300 block of Lansdowne. Man, I'm happy that y'all paying attention to that area because I've gotten about 17 calls where I had to go out there and address police brutality and drug dealers in that area, myself, you know? About 17, I counted, 17. So when I saw that, that portion of the city being looked at, I was grateful. And not just Lansdowne right there, but all the way to Havifer and then all the way back down to like 47th? That whole area is a hotbed for drugs and police brutality. And I believe that now that we're paying attention to that area, we might be able to make some change there that positively impacts the children that live there. All power to the people.
Good afternoon. My name is Viola J. Pryor. I come from the Germantown section of the city of Philadelphia. I stand here with one of the deacons from the Corinthian Baptist Church of Germantown. We are honored, this is Cindy Bass, put resolutions in, one, to rename the street 21st Street where the church is to C.L. Pryor Way. We are most grateful for that, Sister Cindy Bass, and we thank you for putting in that resolution. Also, we are observing our 125th church anniversary next weekend. We are grateful for the service that the church has rendered to the community. Reverend Pryor was an advocate for the community and a visionary man. He went home, I think, a little too soon, but that was not under my jurisdiction. He served the community, he provided for the people, but he had a love for the church and he had a love for blending the church and the community together. We have a senior citizen housing project as part of his involvement. We have a church hall that has been renovated for the use of the administration building and to house a private school. We have much to thankful, be thankful for, and we give all praise, all honor to our Lord Jesus Christ. Thank you.
We have Elizabeth Waring, Lynn Landis, Tyrell Brown, Grace Lewis, and Obona Haggins.
Good afternoon, everyone, council, especially Councilwoman Brooks and Gaudier. Thank you. So I'm Elizabeth Waring and I'm the steward of the Holly Street Neighbors Community Garden in West Philly. We have had a very productive year in gardening and giving back to the community, a lot of seniors. So in this productive year, we've had a lot of support with volunteers planning and especially with giving away. So with the 15 gardeners that we have active and a lot of volunteers, we've given to churches, we've given, delivered to seniors. We don't have water. That's one of the main things. We'd like for the garden to be acquired into the Neighborhood Garden Trust, and that has taken 10 years. And I don't understand why. So I'd like to know with the land bank and the process, what has taken it so long? Because we've been a very good place to collect people and connect people. We have community meetings, we have children from schools, preschools, elementary schools, high school, and even college. We have Drexel helping us with our irrigation system, but we have to get water from the neighbors. Also, with community meetings and connecting and collecting people and with the help, we're just asking, why? Why is it taking so long? We get help, but what's the process? Please, we'd like to know. So in supporting farming, even though it's a smaller garden, we have a shade garden, which is open to the public all the time, but we do have the farm and we need the help with the water and just want the security of knowing that it will always be a garden and green space. Thank you.
Tyrell Brown. Good morning, council members, and good morning, everyone here. My name is Tyrell Brown. I am the founder and executive director of Philly Pride 365, the organization behind Our Fest for National Coming Out Days festivals coming this weekend. First, I want to send my heartfelt thanks to Councilmember Rue Landau for introducing this important resolution and for her continued leadership, visibility, and courage, not just in this chamber, but in every space that she occupies. Rue, your advocacy reminds us what representation, friendship, commitment, and solidarity truly look like. National Coming Out Day is more than just a celebration. It's a reflection of bravery, authenticity, and the ongoing pursuit of freedom. Coming out is not just about identity, it's about stepping into truth despite fear and about creating space for others to do the same. But it's also important to remember that not everyone can safely come out. And that's why it's our collective responsibility to build a world where every person can. That's what Philadelphia Pride 365 stands for and Our Fest are about. Our Fest starts with an acronym that stands for Our Uniting Resilience. It's a declaration that pride programming in Philadelphia is not just confined to one month or one parade. It's something we live, nurture, and protect all year long. Our Fest for National Coming Out Day brings together resources from across city departments, LGBTQ organizations, artists, activists, families, elders, and youth from every neighborhood and every intersection in our neighborhoods and communities in Philadelphia. Philadelphia has always been a city of first, the first LGBTQ rights citizens, birthplace of Black pride, pride leadership from the departed Michael Henson Jr. to me, who founded Philly Pride 365 three years ago. I'm one of only a handful in the country that is a Black person running a major pride festival. Through Our Fest, we are carrying forward that legacy, building bridges between generations, movements, communities, that have been too often divided. So today, as we honor National Coming Out Day, may we recommit to visibility with purpose, to celebration of inclusion, and to progress with love at its center. Thank you to council for recognizing this day.
Thank you.
We have Grace Lewis, Obona Haggins, May Esther Giliard, Stacy Leith, Christine Joy, and Marie Fleming also make their way to the podium.
Good afternoon. My name is Grace Lewis. I came in here not knowing what the topics were going to be and found that I had some concerns and some questions. And as I sat here, they were answered, some relinquishing my time. Good morning, good afternoon. I didn't want my name to be called and I not be present.
So before we call on our next speaker, I just want to acknowledge Ms. Grace Lewis, a member of Tasker Street Baptist Church in South Philadelphia, also community activist. And we just commend you for your hard work and your dedication in being here. Thank you very much. Chief Clerk, please call the next speaker, please.
We have Obona Haggins, then Esther Giliard, Stacy Leith, Christine Joy, and Marie Fleming.
Great morning, everyone. Obona Haggins, fourth-generation chattel slavery survivor. I'd like to first begin by publicly thanking Council President Kenyatta Johnson for co-sponsoring the resolution to conduct hearings on the establishing of the Office of Freedmen Affairs. We've had our disagreements over the years, but this moment proves that two men can see things differently and still unite around what is lawful, just, and constitutional. For that, Mr. President, I thank you. In the same spirit of unity and purpose, I want to highlight the Philadelphia Juvenile Justice Service Center, which is celebrating its 20th biannual cardium event honoring judges and students who participate in the remarkable and beneficial program. Cardium continues to strengthen civic responsibility, legal understanding, and personal empowerment among our youth, ensuring that they inherit a city rooted in justice and opportunity. That same spirit will be on full display on October 26th, when Philadelphia hosts the 30th anniversary celebration of the Million Man March at Love Park. Our theme this year will be raising the estate of the American freedmen, because when the estate is raised, when our rights and legacy are fully recognized, the economic stability of freedmen communities will rise and with it, the prosperity of the entire city. In conjunction with this Office of Freedmen Affairs hearings and the Million Man March and with the support of majority whip Curtis Jones and minority whip Cindy Bass, we'll be conducting political wellness checkups across the city of Philadelphia to educate residents, especially American freedmen, about their rights and the importance of the Office of Freedmen Affairs. So I ask support for the hearing, support for our youth, and support... So I ask support for the hearing, support for our youth, and support for the raising of the estate of the American freedman, with the freedman strategy and not a generalized Black agenda. So with that, I thank you. Have a great day, over and out.
Yes, as you know, I'm Marie Fleming. I'm going to read to you the meaning of the preamble, Constitution of the United States, as you know, was signed in Philadelphia. The meaning of the preamble was to protect the liberty, freedom for all Americans now and in the future. Future, Article One, Section Nine is, unless the privilege of the writ of habeas corpus shall not be suspended, unless, when in cases of rebellion, means liberty isn't used, the clause protects fundamental liberty, the right not to be imprisoned unlawfully. The Fourth Amendment shall, nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. The other mentions is the preamble, oh, I already said that. Okay, so the preamble of the Bill of Rights refers to securing the rights and limiting government power rooted in liberty. As everyone knows, today is Mental Health Awareness Day, and everyone on council knows that my rights are being violated because of my disability. I do have mental illness that has been stabilized for 40 years, and I need council to remember that everyone in this country has rights afforded to us by the Constitution. You all know my rights are being denied, and something needs to be done about it today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Esther Gilliard, also known as Miss Blind Diva of 2022 for life. Thanks to Kendra Brooks for giving me a proclamation or citation in 2022 around this time. I represent all of the blind and visually impaired people of Philadelphia, as well as Pennsylvania, and I agree to the resolution that was presented from Kendra Brooks, Council, for Blindness Awareness Weekend, October 11th and 12th. Oftentimes, the blind and visually impaired people are not recognized for their hard work and achievements that they do for Philadelphia and throughout the tri-state. I am also known as the Eagles Blind Queen because I am wearing this green dress, highlighting that we are Eagles fans. And we green bleed. Also, I want to highlight the National Federation of the Blind of Pennsylvania, the Greater Philadelphia Chapter that are here today, as well as the Keystone Chapter, the Nevilleers, who are also under the Lions Gate, Lions Club, as well as Liberty Resources, Independent Living, as well as Not My Eyes Foundation that I do modeling in New York City, where I receive First Runners Up, Miss Capable Curves, and Miss Social Media Diva 2025. I want to highlight that my dear friend Eric Coleman, who was a diehard Eagles fan. That's why I wore this green, to highlight that blind and visually impaired people do not get the chance to celebrate their sports in solidarity, because there is no accessibility in these games. But they are diehard Eagles fans and Philly fans, 76ers, Flyers, but they don't have access to these sports arena. So I charge Philadelphia Council, as well as the Philadelphia Eagles and all sports and recreation, to highlight and acknowledge these blind individuals for Blindness Equality Achievement Month, as your Eagles Blind Queen, as well as my dear friend Eric Coleman, who was a diehard Eagles fan, who loved the Eagles each and every day, listening to the radio station, even even though he was not able to go to the game personally. But he died in 2023, wearing the Eagles green, he was a diehard Eagles fan. So I want you to make sure that you highlight and recognize and make sure that you are not ashamed of us, because just like the Philly, and the Philadelphia Eagles say, they don't like us, they don't like us, we don't care, just like us blind folks, we don't care, but God cares.
Hello, everyone, my name is Christine Brunson. I'm the founder and executive director of Purple House Project PA. We're a nonprofit organization that supports women impacted by domestic violence, and I'm also a blind leader, and I just wanted to say that I support this resolution. Thank you so much, Councilmember Brooks, for your continued support. We value and appreciate you all. Thank you.
Go Birds!
All right, thank you. All right, good morning, everybody. I also support this, okay. Good morning, my name is Eugenie O'D'Olivera. I also support this resolution, and we really appreciate you acknowledging blind and visually impaired people during this month. And for Councilman Curtis Jones, I'm a constituent of your district, and you, it takes a lot of courage to say that you lost 50% of your eyesight, because a lot of seniors who are losing their eyesight really do not acknowledge that they're losing their eyesight. But my question, not my question to you, but my advice to you, we are a part of an organization called the National Federation of the Blind, and what we do, we advocate for independence for blind people. We send blind people to college, a lot of our members go to college, live independently. And for you, Councilman Curtis Jones, you say you lost 50% of your eyesight, so my advice to you, that you could seek out to be more independent, we could teach you computer training, so you don't have to rely on other people, and so you could still do your job properly and with dignity.
Council President, there are no further names for public comment.
This concludes today's public comment. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passes calendars. Would the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250812?
A resolution renaming the 6,300 block of Lansdowne Avenue as Jayana Powell Way in tribute to the life and legacy of Jayana Powell, whose memory continues to inspire efforts for safer streets and protections for children throughout Philadelphia and across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The chair recognizes majority leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson for motion regarding Resolution Number 250812 on behalf of Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilmember Jones, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded, the Resolution Number 250812 be adopted. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Would the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250817?
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to disposal of 2806, 2903, 2907, 2913, 2917, 2919, 2925, 2937, and 2939 Cecil B. Moore Avenue, located in the 5th Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
The chair recognizes majority leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson for motion regarding Resolution Number 250817 on behalf of Councilmember Jones and Councilmember Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilmember Young, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded, the Resolution Number 250817 be adopted. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Would the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250818?
A resolution also naming the 1,200 block of Crease Street as Bonn-Beton Way.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson for motion regarding Resolution Number 250818 on behalf of Councilmember Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilmember Young, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded, the Resolution Number 250818 be adopted. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Would the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250823?
A resolution renaming the 1,600 block of Ellsworth Street Margaret E. Wallace Way to honor Margaret Mom Wallace for her lifelong dedication and service to the South Philadelphia community.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Bass for motion regarding Resolution Number 250823.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded, the Resolution Number 250823 be adopted. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Would the clerk please read any additional resolutions on today's calendar?
A privileged resolution honoring and congratulating graduate Philadelphia for 20 years of supporting adult learners, transforming lives, and strengthening the economic and educational fabric of the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Phillips.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of a resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Teen Sharp for its outstanding commitment to expanding college access, equity, and leadership opportunities for Black, Latino, and low-income students across the city of Philadelphia and beyond, introduced by Councilmember Phillips.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips for motion on the resolution.
I enthusiastically move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Trust Factor Organization for its transformative work in empowering the youth of Philadelphia through carpentry training, life skills development, and emotional wellness support as part of the Children and Youth Spotlight, which celebrates community-based organizations that are shaping brighter futures for young people across the city, introduced by Councilmember Phillips.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Would the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and congratulating Greg E. Devens, president and CEO of Independence Blue Cross, for his visionary leadership and commitment to advancing equitable health care, introduced by Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Gilmore Richardson for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I enthusiastically move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing Stephen Scooter Fulton Jr.'s outstanding achievements and contributions to the boxing community and his unwavering dedication to the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Gautier.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Gautier for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution designating Thursday, October 9th, 2025, as Children's Environmental Health Day in the city of Philadelphia, and recognizing the importance of clean air and water, safe food and consumer products, healthy environments in a stable climate to children's health and development, introduced by Councilmember Gautier.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Gautier for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion and resolution is adopted. Would the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing Friday, Saturday, Sunday, a Philadelphia culinary gem specializing in new American cuisine for being ranked 16th on North America's 50 Best Restaurants list, introduced by Councilmember Thomas on behalf of Council President Johnson.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to be noted as an aye vote on all bills and resolutions that I have, I might have missed, and I move for the adoption of this resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing Calaya, a Philadelphia culinary gem specializing in Southern Thai culture, cuisine, and hospitality, for being ranked 7th on North America's 50 Best Restaurants list, introduced by Councilmember Thomas on behalf of Council President Johnson.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. On your behalf, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing Chef Chatoueb Noc Satun Ranan of Calaya, Philadelphia, for receiving the North America's Best Female Chef Award 2025, introduced by Councilmember Thomas on behalf of Council President Johnson.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas for motion on the resolution.
Thank you again, Council President. On your behalf, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing Royal Sushi and Izakaya, a Philadelphia culinary gem specializing in fresh omakase, for being ranked 32nd on North America's 50's Best Restaurants list, introduced by Councilmember Thomas for Council President Johnson.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. On your behalf, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Council will be at ease. Councilmember Jim Howdy, would you like to be recognized?
Mr. President, I'd like to be marked aye on anything I missed when I was out of the room. Thank you.
Should we duly record it? Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Legislative Oversight to hold hearings to determine the current state of planning and readiness for the traffic flows caused by events and visitors during the historic 250th anniversary celebration of the United States and the many events coming to town, introduced by Councilmember Thomas.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. Track first gets already crazy, so with that being said, I move for the adoption of the resolution. Sorry, Council President.
No, I was thinking about the arena. It has been moved and property seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Does that mean I'm experiencing post-Arena trauma? Okay. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution, please?
A privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia City Council Committee on Legislative Oversight to hold hearings considering how Philadelphia will handle over half a million extra visitors during 2026, and the feasibility of allowing short-term rental rule holidays as other cities have done around large-scale events, introduced by Councilmember Thomas.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas for motion on the resolution.
In all seriousness, Council President, I think this is an important conversation that we need to have for the residents of Philadelphia, and so with that being said, I would like to move for the adoption of the resolution, but I would also like to be recorded as an aye on all bills and resolutions for the remainder of session, as I have to tend to other council business. So I'll say it again, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted, and you shall be recorded voting aye on all bills and resolutions moving forward. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Safety to hold a hearing to examine whether death by suicide for first responders should be considered as occurring in the line of duty, and to explore mental health initiatives aimed at preventing suicide and supporting the overall well-being of first responders, introduced by Councilmember Jones on behalf of Council President Johnson.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Curtis Jones Jr. for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you, thank you very much. It has been moved and property seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing the Eight Seconds Rodeo as a celebration of Black rodeo culture and advancing cultural tradition in the city of Philadelphia introduced by Councilmember Jones.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. After council, two o'clock, second floor mayor's chambers, we will be recognizing the Eight Second Rodeo, which is an African-American rodeo along with the Universal Circus, which will also be coming here. The rodeo is a one-time show only on the eleventh of this month in Jeffrey Young's district down at the Leocora Center, and the other is across the street from the zoo, and that'll be there for a month. We invite everybody down to welcome them, but it's a great family fun time for everyone. And with that, I move for the adoption.
It has been moved in property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Counsel will be at ease. Councilmember Kendra Brooks, would you like to be recognized?
Yes, I wanted to be voted aye on all bills and resolutions that I missed when I stepped out for a moment. Thank you.
It shall be recorded. Thank you very much, Member Brooks. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing October twenty twenty-five as LGBTQ+ History Month in the city of Philadelphia and honoring the movement for the LGBTQ+ rights, providing visibility for an often erased history, and raising awareness for the ongoing fight for civil rights inequality introduced by Councilmember Landau.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Rue Landau for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing National Coming Out Day on October eleventh, twenty twenty-five in the city of Philadelphia introduced by Councilmember Landau.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Rue Landau for a motion on the resolution.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing October nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, as National LGBT Center Awareness Day in the city of Philadelphia and highlighting the vital role of the LGBTQ+ community centers and serving as crucial lifelines and hubs for the LGBTQ+ community, fostering a sense of belonging and community, advocating for equal rights introduced by Councilmember Landau.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Rue Landau for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution declaring Red October in the city of Philadelphia and wishing the twenty twenty-five Philadelphia Phillies luck in their postseason playoff race introduced by Councilmember Young on behalf of Council President Johnson.
I think we need to do, I think we need to do these resolutions after we win, but the Chair recognizes Councilmember Majority Leader Captain Gilmore Richardson for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of Councilmember Young, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. On the sidebar, I know Member Jones been around here for a while. I think we stopped putting like the flyer jerseys on top of Wayon Pym, right? Right, Councilmember Squilla, so we can, you know, uh, we won last night, so we'll see.
Yeah, pins and needles.
Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing the week of October fifth through eleventh as National Fire Prevention Week in the city of Philadelphia introduced by Councilmember Young.
The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson for a motion on behalf of Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of Councilmember Young, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing the Philadelphia Police Department for its success in hosting the city's inaugural Summer Nightlights program in North Philadelphia's Twenty-Second Police District introduced by Councilmember Young.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Captain Gilmore Richardson for a motion on behalf of Councilmember Young.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of Councilmember Young, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing October twelfth as National Farmers' Day in the city of Philadelphia and celebrating the city council's efforts to secure urban farms and community gardens for neighborhoods across the city of Philadelphia introduced by Councilmember Brooks.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Counsel will be at ease. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Anthony Phillips.
I think I hit the button a little too quickly.
Okay. The Chair recognizes Council- He trying to beat Kirk, but that's a different story. We ain't even get there yet, but no problem. The process is the process. The Chair recognizes the chief clerk to read the next resolution, please.
A privileged resolution celebrating Watch Party PHL and the Philadelphia Sisters for building an inclusive and inspiring community-centered hub for women's professional sports in Philadelphia introduced by Councilmember Brooks.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing October eleventh and twelfth, twenty twenty-five, as Blindness Awareness Weekend in the city of Philadelphia introduced by Councilmember Brooks.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and remembering Masa Amini on the third anniversary of her death under mysterious circumstances while in Iranian custody and recognizing the courage of those fighting for women's rights and human freedom in Iran, the Middle East, and around the world introduced by Councilmember Harity.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jim Hardy for a motion on the resolution.
I move for the adoption of the resolution, Council President.
It has been moved in property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities to hold hearings to investigate SEPTA Regional Rail's Silver Liner Four fleet introduced by Councilmember Dreskow.
Great job, Member Dreskow. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Dreskow for a motion on the resolution.
Uh, Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings on the disposition policy regarding the Polish American Cultural Center Museum located at three oh eight Walnut Street introduced by Councilmember Squilla.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mark Squilla for a motion on the resolution.
Move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing the one-hundred-and-twenty-fifth anniversary of Corinthian Baptist Church of Germantown, a pillar of faith, service, and community introduced by Councilmember Bass.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Bass for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing October twenty twenty-five as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month and promoting the importance of early detection and education in Philadelphia introduced by Councilmember Ahmad on behalf of Council President Johnson.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Nina Ma for a motion on the resolution.
Uh, thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution on your behalf.
It has been moved in property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing October twenty twenty-five as Menopause Awareness Month in the city of Philadelphia to affirm the importance of ending the stigma and cultural silence surrounding menopause and to acknowledge it as a natural biological process that significantly impacts the physical and emotional well-being of many individuals introduced by Councilmember Ahmad.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Ma for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mark Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for leave absence. He recorded as voting aye on all bills and resolutions.
Shall be recorded. Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Council President, there are no further resolutions in my possession.
Speech is on behalf of the minority. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Kendra Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank the members of Love Zion Baptist Church for joining us today to speak about blindness awareness weekend in Philadelphia in today's hearing on accessibility, on Tuesday's hearing on accessibility standards for major events of twenty twenty-six. We heard from many advocates that the needs of people with disabilities are often afterthought, and if they are even considered at all, blindness awareness week is one part of that going, ongoing fight. Our city can do better to ensure that everyone has access to public spaces, public services, and public events, and I look forward to working on the recommendations we've heard at the hearing. I also want to thank urban farmers who came in the city hall today to speak about National Farmers' Day. I first started working with farmer advocates when I learned that many of the city's four hundred community gardens were at risk of being sold as share or sale. In twenty twenty-three, city council invested public dollars to remove the liens of dozen parcels so that they could be acquired by the land bank. Now, many of those parcels are securely in the land bank. The final step is for district council members to help facilitate the transfer to the community farmers. I'm looking forward to working with many of you on these final steps so that we can protect these gardens for generations to come. And finally, I want to invite everyone to my annual Wingahawken Neighbors' Day. This year's Wingahawken Neighbors' Day will be taking place on Saturday, October eleventh, from twelve to four P. M., and it will take place between the fifteen hundred and seventeen hundred blocks of Wingahawken Street in Nice Town. You can pre-register for the event by going to my city council social media pages and signing up. However, pre-registration is not required for attendance. Wingahawken Neighbors' Day started back in twenty eighteen after a string of shootings in my neighborhood in Nice Town. I got together with some of my neighbors for a prayer circle, and we decided that in order to end the violence, we needed more resources and opportunities for our community. This year, our inspiration is one of Nice Town's brightest stars, L. G. P. Qua, known as the voice of the youth. He was an amazing artist who understood the importance of community care. So this year, Wingahawken's Neighbor Day will be all about passing the mic to the next generation of artists and community leaders in honor of his legacy. This is a family-friendly event, and we're going to have live music, food trucks, and a play street for the children. The play street will have activities from the city's parking recreation department and games for all ages. We will also have important resources at this event. There will be health screenings, representatives from insurance companies. We will have a criminal record expansion clinic. In total, there will be over ninety city and community partners who will be out on Wingahawken Neighbors' Day that Saturday morning, Saturday morning at noon. I'm looking forward to seeing you all there, and thank you so much.
Any speeches on behalf of, one second, I got it, I caught it. Thank you. Councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke?
Thank you, Council President. I want to start with just a few notes of gratitude first for the prayers and the support from really what felt like at times the whole city as it related to the health of my son, Augustin. So many of you reached out through phone, text message, gifts, what have you, just to share your, your, your support for his health, and that was really encouraging through the, through the course of my parental leave. So I know this building has a storied history of being combative. That just may be the nature of representative democracy, so it must be that. But in that moment, your humane concern for the health of my son meant the world to me. So thank you so, so much for your prayers. I also want to say thank you to all the community members, the organizations, and the members of the council who came out to my second annual Justice Impacted Community Resource Fair last Friday. The people's needs are holy, as we say in our office, and it's an honor to serve individuals and families whose lives have been warped by the carceral system. Councilmember Landau, thank you for coming out to speak about fair chance hiring and for sending your team to provide resources. Leader Brooks and Leader Gilmore Richardson, I really appreciate representation from your offices at the event, two years in a row. Your teams are amazing. There were many folks at the fair looking for employment who shared that they're struggling to meet, to make ends meet, and I've been hearing that across the city, which is why I'm eager for today to launch the Affordable Philly Now initiative. The cost of living is rising. We hear about it every council session and, and when we're out and about in the city. This council is not new to present programs that directly intervene in the market to secure the needs of our constituents. Just for example, the homestead exemption that you, Council President, as well as you, Leader Gilmore Richardson, have championed. The Basic Systems Repair Program that is supported by many in this body, the Philly Joy Bank and Housing PHL Plus are guaranteed income programs which most directly attack the cost of living. Councilmember Landau's move-in affordability package passed in the spring that helps with exorbitant price of moving. My leader, Kendra Brooks', fight to tirelessly fight to uplift the wage tax refund program and make sure that our workers are not overtaxed on their checks. And today, I'm launching my Affordable Philly Now initiative with a task force to study and provide recommendations on the cost of living. And I'm ready to partner with Councilmember Ahmad in our Committee on the Creative Innovative Economy and all of my colleagues to see what we can do to bring those costs down. But I know people don't want to wait for a task force, so I'm also taking action today to introduce two new bills and elevating another bill from the spring to focus on transportation, on housing, and our utilities. You may remember I put forward the Transit Access Fund during budget season when the fate of our super-successful zero fare program was at risk. The charter change would give the program a permanent funding source to ensure sixty thousand low-income Philadelphians have access to free SEPTA. On housing, today, I'm introducing the Philadelphia Rent Refund to help eligible tenants who are indirectly burdened by rising property taxes and unlike homeowners, get zero local relief. This builds upon the Commonwealth's popular rent rebate program for seniors and people with disabilities on fixed income. And on water, I'm putting forward my proposal that we're calling "We Own It" to protect public water in Philadelphia. Towns and cities have steadily been privatizing their water systems across the nation and the Commonwealth, and everywhere it's happened, rates have skyrocketed. This proposal, if Philly voters had the chance to approve it in the ballot, would ban the city from selling off our water department, which has been publicly operated for over two hundred years. It will also keep our Philadelphia Water Department workforce a union workforce, and I had to counsel Harity for his support on that measure as well. With respect to my approach, I'm running multiple charter changes, very much so on purpose. Look at our nation right now. The anxiety that people have about their pockets and our politics. I believe that people need more avenues to plug into something to fight for some tangible material change that they can see in this moment. It's crazy to say it, but right now, we need to ward against Trump's direct federal encroachment. We're already there. It's very disturbing, but it's just as important to fight how Trumpism works to create more economic pain and pressure in our communities. To my colleagues, I want to say thank you. Thank you for your support thus far. I'm excited to keep making the case to you, and please know that my door is open to each of you if there are ways that we can work together to continue to fight for more Affordable Philly. With that having been said, I do want to ask Council President if I can leave for the rest of the speeches so that I can get out across the street so they can kick off that grocery handout. Please come over, y'all. We'll be at Love Park to host the Affordable Philly Now grocery giveaway from one to three P. And we'll be out there with music, groceries, community groups. I'd love to see you all there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any speeches on behalf of the majority? The Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Anthony Phillips.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Council President Johnson. I just want to be really brief and say we have an incredible event coming up next Saturday, Bingo and Breakfast for all of our seniors in the ninth district. It's an opportunity for all of our adult citizens to get thirty-plus resources. There's going to be Resource Fair. There's going to be Breakfast, of course. There's going to be Bingo. There's going to be line dancing. It's going to be a Finley Recreation Center from nine A M. to twelve P M. on Saturday, October the eighteenth. And Finley is located at seventy-seven oh one Mansfield Avenue. I also just want to briefly thank all of the individuals who supported Councilmember Thomas's event, Philly After School Hype. Thank you, Council President Johnson, for coming the other week as well. We are going to continue to hype up that event. We had a good turnout. We want to find a way to get more kids and parents involved in the program. And to all of our sponsors from Teen Sharp to Coca-Cola to I B E W, so many different folks, we just want to say thank y'all so much for all the work that you've done. And lastly, I just want to say that Teen Sharp is here today. I've done work with them over the past years. They have done tremendous work in helping young people become leaders, but most importantly, go to college for free. And, and that's a hard feat to do. It's a challenge, and it's but it's a science to it. And Teen Sharp has mastered helping African-American, Latino, and low-income students come, go to college for free. And I'm so proud of being associated with the organization. As I said earlier, Ms. Deborah Yanez is here for the organization. She's the parent ambassador, we parent director. We find ways to get young people's parents involved with college access in a deep and meaningful way. And Atrey Alain, for the CEO of Teen Sharp. So I want to say thank you for them and their mentorship and support of young people throughout Philadelphia. And we want to constantly find ways to push them and support them at a higher level because Teen Sharp is definitely, for me, the best organization when it comes to college access and success in the city of Philadelphia. Thank you.
You're welcome. The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Council President. And I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Chairman Driscoll for the resolution that was just referred to committee regarding the Silver Liner cars on the regional rails for SEPTA. I just wanted to call everyone's attention to, and our ongoing attention to the mass transit crisis that we have in the city of Philadelphia as we are preparing for twenty twenty-six. And, you know, initially, I was not going to make remarks today, but while we were in council at twelve forty-five, I received a notification that all regional rail lines have been suspended due to power issues on the lines and that riders should seek alternative routes on the SEPTA system to get to and from work, school, and home. And I will tell you that just yesterday, my sister was lamenting that it took her two and a half hours to get home from downtown Philadelphia, from leaving work as a city employee, picking up her children from daycare, and then finally getting home. A twenty-five minute car ride is two and a half hours on the bus system right now. So seeking an alternative route for many individuals who are working and taking care of their young people and just trying to get to and from work is really untenable. And even though she's on the bus system and many other riders on the bus system, many of the buses have been late or not arriving on time. And so it makes the connecting bus hard to get to. And so I know that our general manager, Scott Sauer, and their team, I just spoke with Wendy, who's always here with us every single week. So thank you, Wendy, for just always being here and being accessible. I know they're doing all that they can in this, you know, extreme circumstance. But I just wanted to call their attention to the fact that not only do we need to prepare for our visitors in twenty twenty-six, but we need to have a reliable system for our residents and our workers here in the city of Philadelphia. And so I'm looking forward to the hearings that Chairman Driscoll will call regarding the resolution that was referred to committee today. And I just ask SEPTA to please, please ensure that while we're going through this tough funding moment in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the city of Philadelphia, that we pay special attention to ensuring that our buses are running on time and that we're working with all of the members of the union to ensure that they are able to get to and from their depot locations so that they can service our constituents across the city of Philadelphia. So thank you very, very much. I'm looking forward, I'm looking forward to the hearings.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Nina Ma.
Thank you, Council President. And colleagues and all Philadelphians watching, today's work advanced three simple ideas: inclusion, dignity, and access. First, this body recognized October as Vision Awareness Month and honored the Overbrook School for the Blind. Since the nineteenth century, Overbrook has helped generations of students and adults' lives learn and live, learn, and work with independence, pairing world-class education with innovation in accessibility and assistive technology. I want to thank the Overbrook community and everyone across our city who is making classrooms, workplaces, and public spaces more inclusive for people who are blind or visually impaired. I particularly wanted to thank Councilmember Curtis Jones for sharing his perspective today in our presentation. It was very powerful. Second, we recognize Menopause Awareness Month. Menopause and perimenopause are natural life transitions that too often come with silence, stigma, and barriers to care, barriers that can affect daily life and job security. By having this openly, and aiming this openly, and encouraging practical supports like flexible brakes, breathable uniforms, temperature accommodations, we affirm a basic truth: health and dignity belong in every workplace. I'm grateful to advocates, clinicians, employers, and residents who are helping Philadelphia lead on this front. Finally, we advanced civic access. My voter registration for renters bill unanimously reported out of committee with a favorable recommendation received first reading today. It's a small but significant common sense step with big impact, adding a voter registration link to the lease-up package so people can register or update their address when they're moving. Meeting residents where they are strengthens our democracy one household at a time. Taken together, honoring Overbrook, reducing menopause stigma, easing voter registration, this is one agenda: a healthier, more inclusive, and more engaged Philadelphia. I thank all my colleagues, staff, partners, and the communities who brought us here today. I look forward to work, moving this work forward and working with all of you. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. Chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I really wanted to start with Philadelphia being a boxing town. I'm so excited about this coming weekend. I want to thank our friends who joined us today to talk about the importance of boxing and its impact. And also my colleague, Guardier, who mentioned her resolution related to Stephen Fulton. And I'm really excited because we have our very own Jaron Boots Ennis, who I want to add is from the eighth district, is from Brickyard, you know, versus somebody else. I don't know who the other person is.
Oh, that's right.
But he's going to be, you know, doing his thing down at the Xfinity Center this coming Saturday. It's going to be a lot of excitement, a lot of fun, a lot of revenue generated for the city of Philadelphia. And so we want to encourage folks to get your tickets. You do not want to miss this. And there is no other boxing town like Philadelphia. So we want to wish him good luck, good luck in advance to Boots Ennis. And we know that he's going to do very, very well Saturday evening. I also wanted to mention that I'm very excited about our introductions today. And we had introductions that touched pretty much every part of the eighth district, from expanding recreation space in Nice Town to aiding small businesses in Germantown, to growing and supporting shopping centers in Somerville, and also getting started with the renaming of Twenty-First and Godfrey after Reverend C. L. Pryor of Corinthian Baptist Church of Germantown, who was just a phenomenal human being. We also did a separate resolution recognizing the one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary of Corinthian Baptist Church. So we're excited about all of the wonderful activities and celebrations that are going to be happening around Corinthian in the coming weeks to come. And also, I just wanted to make one last mention that we also added a resolution today to help ease the flow of traffic and to ease the movement in north, the North Philadelphia, Lippincott Stadium, Twenty-Second Street, Panatty Playground area, all in the Allegheny West part of our district. And, you know, finally, go Birds. We are looking forward to tonight's game. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. The Chair recognizes Councilman Rulando.
Thank you, Council President. Today, I was proud to introduce three resolutions recognizing important events, milestones, and celebrations for Philadelphia's LGBTQ+ community. National Coming Out Day, which takes place this Saturday, is an annual celebration that encourages LGBTQ+ individuals to embrace their authentic selves and to further the fight for our rights. Each queer person's coming out story is unique, personal, and unfortunately, sometimes mixed with heartbreak. As Philadelphia's first openly LGBTQ+ member of city council, I want to speak to anyone in Philadelphia who might be struggling with their identity or who might not be in a safe space where they can come out. You are not alone, and you are worth it. In the past year, five hundred and twenty anti-LGBTQ+ bills have been introduced into state legislation across the nation, with two hundred and twenty specifically targeting the trans and non-binary communities. I say this not to additionally scare us, but to remind everyone, including my straight and cisgender colleagues, why we are always fighting to foster inclusivity and solidarity with the LGBTQ+ community in Philadelphia. This is, this leads to why I introduced my other two resolutions. The first recognizes October as LGBTQ+ History Month in Philadelphia. While June might feel like a nonstop celebration, and it is a fun time, October is about remembrance and commitment to visibility. It's about honoring our history and the often erased stories of LGBTQ+ people who have shaped our city and our nation. From the annual reminders outside Independence Hall in the nineteen sixties, to the first gay pride march in nineteen seventy-two, to the activists who fought to declassify homosexuality as a mental illness and to pass anti-discrimination laws, Philadelphia has always been at the forefront of the LGBTQ+ rights movement. When our federal government is threatening to erase us and roll back our advances on our rights, it's time to make history and stand up for our Philly family. That's why we call it the city of brotherly love, sisterly affection, and city sibling solidarity. I introduce a resolution recognizing October ninth twenty, nineteenth, twenty twenty-five as National LGBT Center Awareness Day. LGBTQ+ community centers are the heart of our movement. They are often the first safe spaces someone turns to when they are coming out, seeking support, or looking for a place to belong. These places, like Philadelphia's Williamway Center, Attic Youth Center, Galley Colors, and so many more, provide critical services from mental health care and legal aid to cultural programming and HIV prevention. Yet despite serving over two million people annually, many of these centers operate with minimal staff and resources. Some rely entirely on volunteers, and still, they show up for our community every day. Today is an opportunity to celebrate where we've been, where we, what we're doing right now, and how our actions today will shape the future of the LGBTQ+ community in Philadelphia. Thank you to all who are doing the work to protect living authentically, and especially to my friends who provided public comment today. Finally, I want to address the viral NBC ten video about the Stranded Travelers Assistance Program, which, like programs offered in many cities around the country, provides support to non-residents who find themselves stuck in Philadelphia. The video highlights what many of us already know, that we need a coordinated citywide strategy to address homelessness by providing permanent affordable housing and social services to those in need, not just temporary fixes to get people off the streets. As a former housing attorney and lifelong civil rights advocate, I know that we don't need a Band-Aid on a much deeper wound, a housing crisis that demands sustained investment, compassion, and accountability. And finally, just a reminder that the tech committee will be holding an A I. hearing next week. I encourage all my colleagues and any staffers who are interested in learning more to come out to Philly Cam for this as we delve into how our municipal government is approaching A I. I plan to hold more hearings around the broader opportunities and challenges of A I. in the future, including one on data centers and intergovernmental partnership. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five at ten A M.
It has been moved in property seconded that council stand adjourned until Thursday, October sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five at ten A M. All of in favor was signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, the motion carries. Thank you all very much.